Okay, let's call this meeting to order. A special meeting, Strategic Plan Session Number Three, Monday, May 5, 2025, at 12:01 PM. Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marx.
Here.
Mayor Bozzo.
Here.
Okay, let's move right into staff.
All right, can you hear me? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see, this is Session Three of your strategic planning process that is now into May, and I'm going to take you a little bit about where you've been. February 12, you had your first general session, six, seven hours, talking about what was important to the council and what ideas and what your vision was for the next couple of years. So we did that, and then we gave you the financial report on May 17. And then today, we have the economic development, community development. So essentially, what we did is all the things, everything that was discussed, we said there's no noes today, there's no, this isn't going to work, or this doesn't make any sense. But today is kind of, you're going to get more into that a little bit, because we asked you what the what was, but now we're asking you what the how is. Yes?
Do you still have those yellow poster things you wrote on?
I do, but I have it even better. I have it on a slideshow. So we took, I mean, we can bring them, but it's exactly-
I mean, I just kind of remember where things were. I can kind of remember-
Okay, yeah, I think, could we put those up somewhere? Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know where they're at. Okay.
Thank you.
So then, we'll go through those items also on the slideshow as well, and then, at the end of the day, we will have then your budget release, we will do on Wednesday, and you might ask, how can you release a budget when you're still doing strategic planning? Well, it's really quite simple, because things can change. We do know that certain parts of our budget are fixed, and unless there is a recommendation to reduce that budget significantly, we won't have a hard time pivoting into what happens over the next couple of weeks. We have until June 2 to make those adjustments, and you also have a budget workshop, too, on the 19th, I believe? The 12th, the 12th of May, to discuss, and then another meeting on the 19th, where you do your legislative agenda and any wrap-up items. So just because you're getting a recommended budget this week, it's just the start, it just gets you started with the financials, but we'll have a lot of work to do with that. Okay, so, and then budget adoption on June 2 as well. So, okay, so this is our agenda for today. We are at 12, 12:05, and so at this time, I'll give them a couple of minutes to get that and why they're doing that, if each council member would like to do their opening remarks or things like that, like we did previously, we've allotted some time for that before we get into public comment.
Okay, great. I'll go from my right to left, Councilmember Bracco.
Well, I just hope that out of this, we get some momentum going, because it seems like we do these and then nothing ever comes of them. Everything just goes in a drawer until next year. So my hope is that we see some outcomes. Thank you.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes, good afternoon. So excited to get started with this part of the process, excited to have some community members here, of course, and I've been speaking to different community members, obviously, since our last meeting. I think that it is an important process to piggyback on what actually Dion just said, which is, hope that we get momentum. I hope that we actually have things like metrics, milestones, other things, and whatever we're coming up with, so that we have it very, very trackable. I know we have work plans and things like that, maybe there's some things that we can do a little bit differently going forward with the new council, so we can keep a better track of certain things and how we're progressing, and I'm excited to see how we're going to get this whole thing done and what's going to come out of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Marx.
Well, this morning, when I saw we had to do public comment, I started thinking, okay, what would I like to say right now? And I have to echo what Councilmember Bracco and Fugazi said. We have a new council, and hopefully, this new council is going to be holding everyone more accountable. This is my seventh year, and when we do the strategic planning, we do a lot of talking, but there's not a lot of action. And I don't want to be wasting the next four hours. I think when Jimmy talked about the how, I think we're going to be really very specific on how we see it done. I don't want to see anything proposed that we cannot do, or I don't want to hear we cannot do it because of money, because of personnel. It's like, no, if we think it's important enough, I want to see it done. The Downtown Committee started in April of 2023, and we sunsetted in April of 2025. In January of 2024, they had two proposed amendments on how to get economic development going for downtown, and they still have not made it to the council. Those are the types of things I'm tired of seeing, I don't want to see it anymore, and I think as a council, we need to start holding people accountable and pushing for this. If we're going to talk about how to bring more money into this city, then we have to talk realistically about where that money is going to come from. So maybe I'm going to be the grumpy nag today of saying, okay, give me solutions, don't just give me problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. So, you know, I said most of what I wanted to say back in February, but a couple of things that I want to highlight for today is that I really want to send a message to staff, public, and our bargaining units to buy in on this economic development direction we are taking. It's the one thing that unites all of us here on the City Council and in this room. I think that if we all pull in the same direction, we can increase the services we provide to the community, which seems to be one of the ultimate goals of economic development. But it requires us to take a proactive approach in being responsive to the end-users, that their needs of our services, from a simple building permit, business permit, the public making service requests through the Gilroy Connect app, or those highly technical developments that push the comfort level of everyone. Always have a warm handoff, anticipate the needs of our customers, and close that circle of customer service by ensuring the customer gets what they need. To the public, I want you to have high expectations from us and from me. Report service requests and repairs that you see to the Gilroy Connect app. See something, say something, and we all track it. I promise to hold myself at a high expectation level if you do the same, and as always, my office looks forward to working with everyone here in the City Council, staff, our labor partners, and the public to get a balanced budget and work plan that may go right livable for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ramirez.
So, thank you, and it's just wonderful to be, you know, one, two, three, four, fifth, or whatever, to speak, because we do have that momentum going. We're all kind of on the same page. My priorities remain the same as when I was running for office, public safety, economic development, and local control. And the way I see things as an elected is, I was hired by the residents of this community, and then I was hired based upon the priorities I ran on, and so it is my responsibility to see those through, and it is our job as a council to give direction to staff based upon what the residents of this community want. Public safety is very, very loud by the residents, this is something that is a priority to them. In order to get that, we need to have economic development. Economic development is going to pay for the services that everyone in this community wants, including and especially public safety. We need to make sure that we, the state has imposed a lot of unfunded mandates, again, economic development is going to help pay for those, and so that's the direction I am going, that is the emphasis that I will have, and the other thing is, of course, pickable.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, you brought it up.
I did. We all got the emails.
Yes. Well, I'm excited about the continuation of discussing strategic planning and moving forward, my second time through, and I'm excited about it, and the conversations I've had over the last three months with people and talking about economic development and the steps we can take and partners we can partner with to see that done, both with staff but also with groups within the community. We're at the threshold of some really good things moving forward, and I think we're the right team to push these things forward and with the staff and roll up our sleeves and get going.
Thank you. I will end with a few comments myself. I know today is more about the how as much as the what, so I would like to remind folks what I said about the what when we met in February. I do believe that through our Planning and Building Department, that they would be able to serve this community better with more peer-to-peer relationships with the private and public sector outside of City Hall. I think it's important for them to get to know the folks who are investing and building in Gilroy a little bit better. I think that would help with relationships and eventually help with economic development. When it comes to housing, I believe that I am okay with the idea of, in certain locations of Gilroy, that we have to consider more high-density housing in a creative way, and I know this idea makes some very, very reasonable, competent, involved people in Gilroy. I know this idea makes them a little bit uncomfortable, but I do believe that we have to consider some type of housing on the east side of 101 inside of our retail zone. I don't think that we need to go out into our agricultural sector, I'm a big supporter of agriculture, but I think with a well-thought-out plan of higher-density housing on the east side of 101 actually protects our agriculture if we do it proactively and manage what we want, not what outside agencies want later down the road. When it comes to economic development, I believe that we need a very, very strong, aggressive, in-house economic development program led by someone with vast experience and understanding of building relationships between City Hall and the investment community. There are still many residents in Gilroy that fear that we may become a bedroom community. We must have an aggressive economic development plan to prohibit that. With the potential for Sharks Ice, our robust arts community, our wineries, our shopping, our downtown, our agriculture heritage, Gilroy Gardens, amusement park, and the untapped potential of the some 15-odd acres below the amusement park, Gilroy has the potential to become this recreation and activities destination that we all keep talking about. And finally, when it comes to dealing with unhoused and homelessness, I believe that it's time that we take a little bit more outgoing approach to how we deal with the unhoused. I think we need to capitalize on the relationships that have been built between the Quality of Life officers and those in the unhoused community and the service providers, take advantage of those relationships that have been built, but we need to start working alongside service providers and city agencies that are nearby Gilroy and within the county, so that we can leverage the experiences of all of these agencies and cities that will help Gilroy do better dealing with the unhoused. The fact of the matter is, is that Gilroy is already meeting the needs of the unhoused down here in South County due to the fact that most of the service providers are down here in Gilroy, so I'd like to maybe expand on the fact that indirectly, we are all sort of working together already and have a little bit more unified voice when it comes down to the South County. So those are my comments regarding of what we're talking about today, and I think from there, we can go to public comment. Yep.
Yes, Mayor, council, we have one speaker currently, James Sooner.
Good evening, council. My name is James Sooner, I'm a longtime resident of Gilroy, builder, developer. Started out with the Hecker Path Specific Plan, I was on your Downtown Specific Plan Task Force, I was one of the two developers on your General Plan Update Committee. I've also served with 12 councils, seven mayors, five city administrators, and I lost track of the Public Works Director and Planning Directors and whatnot. But I sent this to you when you were candidate, there's three key things that I think, I'll start out on the positive stuff, we'll get to the other stuff later, but three things that I think you need to do. One is the Nexus Study for your impact fees. This has been main priority implementation for the Downtown Specific Plan, it never got done. We're currently redoing our CIB, or CIP, and that is also linked to the Nexus Study. If Jimmy were to issue a RFP for that today, it would take us three years to make it through the consultants, make it through the planning, the public outreach, get it back to council. That would put us halfway through our general plan, our current general plan. I think that's a high priority. Secondly, small projects, I think that a lot of non-corporate applicants have a hard time making it through this process, and they've kind of stacked the application to where if we don't have the irrigation plan and the emitter on the plant that goes in front of my front door, they won't review the foundation plan. And it's such a long list of items that it's hard to overcome that before it gets processed. Concurrently, it works consecutively, it takes way too much time. And basically applicant rights, so, you know, I've had some issues where I cannot get satisfactory resolution through staff, and I've been told that my only path forward would be litigation. Now, I've only got two claims to fame, one, every single project I've touched has actually been built, and two, I've never had to litigate, ever, and I've convinced every outside agency within 50 miles to approve my projects. So I think there's somewhere between what's fair and reasonable, just and unjust, and then way over here is what's legal and illegal. And when it comes to impact fees, processing times, applicant rights in general, staff's way over here, like right on this line. And it started out, you know, with Tom Haglund, then it just kind of progressed with Gabe Gonzalez, and, you know, Jimmy kind of inherited what it is. It's not his fault, it's not our current staff's fault, but the process has just become unbearable. And you heard that from Gary Walton, I mean, a year to process a permit, you know, we built the Empire State Building in 18 months, think about that. So I'll continue more later, but those are the three things that I think you need to look at immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other speakers at this time.
Okay, back to staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about the opening comments a little bit, and I'm going to repeat this back with no names. We heard momentum, measurables, grumpy nag today, accountable, working with our bargaining groups, pulling together, public safety, ED pays for services, we heard ED again, customer service, housing, unhoused, protects agricultural areas, ED again, bedroom, community, and then a few other things. And so it's a good thing that we heard, I think, ED every time, because that's what we're talking about today, so we're off to a very good start. I hear words of accountability and goals and measurables and things like that, and I think that is very important for us as we're moving forward now, is to be very specific. And what we do a lot in our, in the organization itself is we use a concept that's very known in management called SMART goals, and those goals are very specific, they're measurable, they're attainable, they're relevant, and they're time-sensitive. So if you have a program here where you want to work on, you don't have to develop that SMART goal today, but you have to keep it in mind, like, how long is this, should this take, how long do you think it should take? So that way, we can iron all this out now when we get ready to do the work plan, and when staff is over here, and maybe council's there, we're already starting off trying to figure out where there might be a disconnect. So keep that in mind today, all goals are great, but if they aren't measurable and if they're not time-sensitive, they're ideas, and so I'll push back a little bit here and there when maybe there is an idea, I'll say, okay, what do you mean? How's that relevant? Is that even attainable? Because if we do adopt goals that aren't even achievable or attainable, then we're wasting, you know, we're wasting precious time when we can be doing other work. So I'm going to come back through that list when we get all done, and, Ms. Marx, I am going to see if you were a grumpy nag today, so we're wa-
I am.
Okay, well, you called it out, so we're going to check in with you at the very end, but again, if I'm doing all the talking, this isn't going very well. And so I'm here to listen, our staff's here to listen, and you'll see what we started with not too long ago, back in February, and you're starting, you're going to start seeing it come together over the next couple of weeks. Anything you'd like to say to me as we go through this, Ms. Ramirez?
So I appreciate the SMART goals, because I think it is incredibly important that we set very, SMART goals, you know, I don't want to talk about pie in the sky, I want to, you know, for example, I want three new police officers hired by the end of 2025, or something like that, an Economic Development Director in place in, you know, 12 months, whatever. What I would appreciate is during this session, if something is thrown out that you're thinking it's not attainable, or that it is attainable but that timeline might be a little off, or something like that, I'd like to have that back and forth and that negotiating kind of happen here, so that it, I think that having that conversation here will help direct if we throw something out and you're saying, it just cannot happen, and you give us reasons why, okay, well then what's Plan B, so that we don't come back six months from now, or, you know, whatever, it's, let's go. And I also feel that, to the point of what Carol and Dion have said, you know, I came to the council meetings all year last year, and I remember one in specific, and there were like 20 goals that were listed. To me, that's not attainable, right? I think that we need to narrow down those goals that, for example, if we were to hire an Economic Development Director, there's an assumption there that certain things will happen, you know, with that, we don't have to list every single thing out. Those are my thoughts.
Good. Sorry.
The idea that we'll have those specific values of those metrics in a meeting like this, for everything, I don't think is entirely reasonable, but I think that it is imperative that there is some sort of agreement that there should be a particular metric and what that metric might be. As an example, for instance, if we are looking at economic development, and we're going to track, and we even have a hire at some point for that, we're going to want to know at certain times that we should be agreeable on, is it top-line revenue? Is it square footage developed? Is it, I don't know what it is, but those things should be part of the discussion, in my opinion, and then if it requires you to come back and say, well, this is a reasonable goal to attain, and I think we can do this by this time, I think that is what we should strive for, and I think it falls through to also public safety and other things as well. It's very easy to hire for people to get a project done or get a thing done, but when you want to see where the actual results are in public safety, for instance, whether or not the data is correct, I don't know, because I'm still trying to ascertain it from one of the police captains, but we had eight DUIs in February, we had 12 in March, and we had two in April, according to Citizen RIMs, so is that, you know, are those reasonable metrics, or is there a metric even in public safety? Not all of them, but one of them, we go, you know what? We really need to focus in this area, and we think this is a reasonable thing for us to attain, and then you can say, or whomever can say, well, that would be great, but we need to have this kind of a police force, or this kind of, to do that. So I think we really should have the exercise on looking at what those metrics and those measurables and those milestones are, and the numbers and things that go into it can be filled in over the next weeks or what have you.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein.
I think, talking about when you, economic development and a director, in my mind, because this discussion has been going on for so long, to me, that's the highest priority to get that going in that direction, so now is the time, it's, I'm not looking at six months or a year, my expectation and where we need to really get moving forward is part of this budget and moving forward, July 1, looking for that, that position to be filled as sooner than later, so that's my ask, and so that's part of this conversation.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for that feedback. Let's get to work. Okay, so all, most of these things are there in really bad handwriting from myself and Bryce, but we made it nice and cleaner for you. So the first thing that we want to discuss, we had a lot of discussions about master plans and some of the history of some of these master plans, and strategic plans, economic development plans, and Victoria's going to be able to kind of walk you through this slide a little bit to discuss what happened with these plans, where they're at, and why they didn't really evolve, and why it might be time to update some of those plans in our community. Okay, so you can see, sure.
Good morning, everyone. Victoria Valencia, Economic Development Manager for the City of Gilroy. On this slide, we'll start off with the Economic Development Guiding Principles. The city has seven Economic Development Guiding Principles set by council that sets the expectations for every program, project, and partnership that touches economic growth. This document establishes the seven touchstones for staff to use when screening ideas, crafting policies, or negotiating with the private sector and other agencies. Moving on to the plans, the city's first Economic Development Strategic Plan was produced in February 2014. It's the basis for the Economic Prosperity Section in the 2040 General Plan, which was adopted in 2020. There was also a place-based strategy done in 2019 to assist staff in evaluating policies and potential incentives. Also in 2019, the Gilroy City Council declared the City of Gilroy a recreation destination, focusing on the Recreation Gateway Area, Gilroy Ice Center, Gourmet Alley revitalization. There are also several other strategic plans in the pipeline or coming soon, including the VTA Transit Oriented Communities High-Speed Rail VTA Gilroy Station Area Plan, the Downtown Strategic Plan, which is in this current year's budget, and the Gilroy Sports Park with Sharks Ice and a potential strategic plan for the economic development in that general area. Now, getting back into the 2014 plan, there was a study session in November 2017 that identified 24 initiatives. There wasn't a lot that happened after that 2014 plan, which is why the study session was called, and in January 2018, the city administrator at the time outlined roles, responsibilities for the city and partner organizations. There was a draft of outlined policies that came in January 2018, and, let's see, and then there was an Economic Development Incentive Framework, which was presented in 2018. That's kind of where the place-based strategies came in, and then the 2020 General, or 2040 General Plan, and then we entered into COVID, and that kind of leads us to where we are now. And... Jimmy, are you with us?
There we go. And actually, Victoria makes a really good point, there was, basically, there was a lot in place, and at that time, too, we also had the Economic Development Corporation. We had a lot of effort into that, and for a period of two to three years, it just died, primaried to COVID, we were in survival mode. So, you know, I don't want to keep talking about COVID, COVID, but that is the reality, that a lot of that momentum was lost, so now you have the opportunity to restart that, the momentum. And I want to go back to the guiding principles, because I think somebody mentioned, you know, about having measurables with economic development, and one of the things that we are going to be talking about today is incentives and measures about return on investment, business, you know, business words that many of you are familiar with, you know, running your own business, and how things have changed since this group or this community went through this process, you know, 10, 15 years ago. There's some things there, but I do kind of think it's time for a complete refresh. After 10 years and a global pandemic, and the organization is so different, and community is so different, this may be something of interest, and could probably be on a work plan of someone that, you know, we'll talk about hiring, but it is definitely, knowing what you're walking into a situation and what your principles are, are you looking for employment, are you looking for sales tax generation, maybe that incentivizes you to give something in return, and it's not just sales tax rebates, it could be fees, it could be things like that. So I do think that is, if the council approves a position to lead this, that would probably be job number one, is what are our principles? What do we, what do we feel is in our toolbox to attract, retain, and have a good economic development program? So I'll leave the word toolbox with you and then, and listen to your feedback.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Victoria, you talked about seven touchstones for economic development. Do you have them with you? Because I like to hear them, because maybe we can use some of them in the refreshing process that we go through.
Sure. So they are Focus on Revenue Enhancing Economic Development, Evaluating Return on Investment and Community Benefit, Recognizing Incentives Are Catalysts, Promoting a Can-Do Mindset for Economic Development, Using Data for Insight and Expanding Accessibility, Being Visionary, and Sustainability in Viability.
Thank you, those are good. I can see those would be the seven touchstones that we would want to keep. All right. All right.
Any other questions?
Let's go ahead and talk about where we're at with the downtown specific plan we're updating now. I get the two confused, too, the strategic end. So could you explain the difference and where we're at with each of those?
Sure. So we have it in this year's budget to do the downtown strategic plan update, which is more about the vision, what we want to see in downtown as far as business mix goes, whereas the specific plan is more of a planning tool and used more by community development. So the strategic strategic plan is in this budget currently on hold, just pending further direction from the council. But that's, again, just about the visioning of what we want to see in downtown.
Can you give some examples of both so people can have a more clear idea of the strategic versus specific?
Yeah, so strategic plan would be more like, we want to see public spaces, arts, and culture. The specific plan would set the parameters for those things to occur in a very general form.
So the first one's the what, the second one's the how, sort of?
Yeah, the second would be more of the kind of legislative. One's the art, the other is the science, you know?
All right.
Okay.
Next slide, please. All right, so getting into the economic development engine, outside of the administration department, community development and public works are also a major part of our city's economic development team overseeing the planning, building, fire prevention, and engineering. Some ideas that have come up include streamlining processes like the pre-application process and identifying fees for these applications. Another idea that has been brought up by council is a standard blueprint for businesses. As you can imagine, different types of businesses and locations are going to require different things, so a standard blueprint isn't always going to be a feasible option. The state does have a permit center called Cal Gold where potential business owners can select their business category and get a general idea of all the permits they may need from the city to the federal level. The Office of the Small Business Advocate provides resources and support to small businesses, including nonprofits and startups. And then another key player here is the private sector. Council may want to consider engaging with the private sector and community partners for targeted initiatives like art, culture, beautification, and workforce development, to name a few. Right, and then?
So these were all your thoughts back in February, and so if you'd like, we can we can expand on these topics and discuss a little bit. I don't recall who who just says zoning codes, but I do believe that the thought of how do we make this process, you know, faster, more efficient, more cost-efficient and all those factors.
So I would like to suggest that we, you know, in that particular area, and I actually had made notes, you know, when we got down to planning later on in the agenda, I think to Greg's point, we need to pull in and have a roundtable conversation and pull in stakeholders. You know, the developers, the business owners, the landowners, the, you know, what have been some of the challenges and how can we better address this and streamline the process? And I don't want to jump ahead, but, you know, one of those things, for example, that could be looked at is what do we contract out that could be brought in-house? What would make sense to bring in-house in order to streamline that process? But I think that I think it would be very short-sighted if just council and staff kind of have this conversation and make these decisions without involving the external stakeholders.
So one of the things that comes to mind for me that could be super helpful, if you think of a counselor at like at a high school, right? They 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 have their students come in, and they understand how many different things work, and their goal is to matriculate a great student out the other side. So I'm wondering whether or not the city at some kind of business level, right? You know, maybe not the hot dog guy on the street, okay, but at some kind of a level that we actually have an advocate-type program where you have people in in City Hall, and they can be different people from different slices, I think, of City Hall that become that business's advocate to help them navigate the processes that are sometimes so difficult, who can be the ear, who can be the one who says, that doesn't quite make sense. Let me make sure this gets over to this person. Or, you know what? Let's make sure you get this and this done. That way, you're ready to go with this, because they understand the process more. And their ultimate goal, and maybe even, you know, the way that they're reviewed in their job or anything else, is how many of these do we actually bring through and get great ratings on like, wow, it was really easy to do business in Gilroy or really easy to develop a property in Gilroy because I had this one person who was my advocate? Anyway, that's just something throughout there.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I were to have an I wish list, it would be that when we hear certain comments made, you know, during public comment, that staff would have a right to rebut it or correct something, because I'm going to go back to what Councilmember Ramirez was saying about the zoning and codes. Mr. Sooner, you know, you mentioned about a certain person that it took a year for permitting. Why did it do that? There is a story, and when they come to council, we do go back and we dig in to the facts, but those facts never are allowed to come out in a public hearing, that there's another side to that story on why that happened. And in this particular case, it was not community development's fault. So there's a lot of complaining that that happens, but we have to always look at both sides on why. And if there could ever be a process where when something incorrect is said at the podium, it'd be really nice to be able to hear what actually happened, and then the two sides could come to in the to the middle and agree. Yes. Oh, yeah, definitely.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. So one of the things we were talking about, that we had a good discussion on back here is is that our community development staff is very used to ministerial process, streamlining process on the housing side, so we're trying to get them to sort of realize that, that maybe there are certain things that they could come up with on the commercial side that they could also do the same thing. And, you know, one of the things that that you were talking about, Terrence, about is it's something that the housing advocacy groups do, it's called capacity building grant. So what they do, like Destination Home will give like a three-year capacity building grant, so that way you have a staffer that they pay for that's embedded in the housing, you know, development, but at the same time goes around and is sort of embedded in these small little groups and stuff like that to make the process faster. So having an advocate, you know, based just like that, but more on the business side, economic development side, I think is something that's that's very doable, especially since we already have that on the residential side. And I think that 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 would actually work a lot better because oftentimes, as you know, many people will come to us and they'll have us be the navigator inside there, and that's sometimes even hard for us because oftentimes the members of the public have more access to staffers than than we're supposed to.
Go ahead.
I disagree with that. I think if you have a problem where people don't understand your procedures, and they're too cumbersome and hard to understand, you don't need someone to explain it to the applicant. You need to make some changes and make it simplify things and make it easier for a business to open open up. I've been through this in Morgan Hill, Hollister, and Gilroy, and it's hard. My personal experience, I had given up on my property out there until Christie Abrams got all of the department heads together, and we sat in a room, and they actually argued with each other, no, that's not right. You can't make them do that. And that's how we got to the bottom of it. But the only reason that happened is because I was a city council member.
I I'm going to make a couple of comments. Maybe I'm going to fall right in the middle here. So as we've been discussing, some folks are saying we need to make this simpler and more streamlined. Other folks are saying that maybe we can develop some policies that are similar to residential that we could have in commercial. And one of the things that I keep talking about is relationships, relationships, relationships. We need to have somebody or a culture at City Hall that when somebody does submit their plans and it gets, you know, they're trying to get their foundation plan, and they get held up because of a 23-cent emitter. I know that was an example that he was using, but for someone who has submitted plans into cities, not just Gilroy, it happens. It's extremely frustrating when things like that happen. That's what holds up economic development and economic activity. I think this is one of the reasons why that I lean on so hard the idea of peer-to-peer relationships and economic development director, because typically, that's a person who could run around and help manage some of those relationships when challenges do arrive. Any other comments or questions for Victoria?
Thank you.
All right, next slide.
Yeah, I can do that one.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'm going to shift gears here because you're doing a lot of my job, which is great because that means I don't have to do it. And what I mean is that you are already telling me what you want to see out of this department, and I didn't think you were going to do that, and that's why we're pivoting. And let's talk through this a little bit because this is very important to you. It's something that we've been hearing over the last few months, and so we're going to design an ED department just real quick, and we're going to give it some goals, and we're going to give it some measurables. Now, whether this is what actually ends up happening, I'm not asking you to do that, but I'm asking you to show me more specifically what you're talking about, because it does happen. Sometimes the emitter does hold up a project, but how often does that happen? Not very often, but it does happen, and that's that is a problem. So, okay, let's say in your world, our world, you have an ED director, and Councilmember Klein said, I want that position to start. What day did you say, Mr. Klein? July 1. Okay, that is not attainable, but we'll go with it for this. You didn't say what year, so. No, no, no. Okay, so, okay, Mr. or Mrs. ED Director, your principles are the seven principles, right? Are we okay with those? Does that give this person a good sense of what they're walking into? This is what this council wants. This is what this community wants, is these seven principles.
That should be on this, on the job description.
And should be in the flyer and should be in all those things. So the seven principles.
This person's role reports directly to you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we haven't decided that yet, but theoretically.
Well, you're doing this game, so.
Yes. Well, it is a director, and directors report to me, so that's.
And you also mentioned who who would know about that? Like the seven principles, it's on the job description, who knows about it? The community.
Community, okay. So employee and community. Okay, so now they have a sense that if their seven principles, and this is why you interview, this is how you get candidates, if they say my principle is is to turn Gilroy into a metropolis with 20 20 20-story-high buildings, we don't want that person, right? So that we've already set this person up for what we expect from the from the policy direction all the way down to the implementation. So we've got that. So we're all going to design their first year of work, and we have the downtown strategic plan.
How do we presume that?
Well, the same way they presume that you're going to approve a position. We have to just like take a leap of faith.
Shouldn't they be the one that basically helps define what that's going to be?
It could be, but it's already in progress. It's already had money allocated, and it's something we've identified as being updated. But they could come in and say, no, you don't need to do that.
Or whatever's next.
Or whatever's next. Yeah. You got to kind of play fantasy football here a little bit. Yeah. But I'm giving you an example of what they could do. How about that? Because these are common things that an economic developer would do. We've seen them in other cities and things like that. So let's say, okay, now you've got these two plans to work on. So you've got your principles, you've got two plans to work on, and then we go down to some of the solutions of the issues that you have identified. And one is roundtable.
I'd like to stop there.
Okay, hold on, let me finish writing this, and then you can hop in. Okay.
So I would, you know, I think that that we are, when I look at down an economic development director, I'm not looking at just downtown. So I think that another bullet point before you get down to the how is, you know, yes, the downtown strategic, yes, the specific plan, but yes, a citywide opportunity plan or something like that, because I think that, you know, economic development is not just focused downtown.
That's exactly why I wrote those two down, because many of you have talked to me about the outlets, the gateways and things like that. But when people think economic development in Gilroy right now, they think downtown because of what we as a city have spent in the last few years down there, the amount of time, the amount of political energy in that area, we have to change that mindset.
Well, and I think that's why we need to include that, because that is very limiting if we just focus on the downtown. I think that in order to help the community understand that we are missing out on a lot of economic development opportunities if we just focus specifically to the downtown.
But even before that, shouldn't we, I mean, are we looking toward driving a certain business? Are we looking, we need to get revenue up, or what is it that is the top-line thing we're going to do because it drives everything else more than anything? So what is the purpose of having economic development in Gilroy? Okay, is it to build more Sharks Ice-type things, or is it to actually drive revenue or drive jobs, right? We want more local jobs or those seem to be more higher-level things that you would want to give to a person like this to begin with before everything else. Just my.
Well, I'll let me let me push back on you a little bit then. Are we in any other business for economic development other than to increase our revenues? We've talked about public safety. We've had a ballot measure, it didn't work, so I would hope this is implied.
Yeah, well, is it? That's fine.
But is it? Is it implied?
I don't think, I think I think what Terrence is trying to get at, and what I'm going to add, there's no there's no implying here. We have to actually write it down.
Right, be very specific, because whoever we hire has to be the person that's going to bring money to this city, so we are now able to expand programs to our city.
Fair enough. Okay, so we're going to put dollar signs everywhere and make sure they know that the goal is to generate revenue to provide services.
That's their job. And that's what they are evaluated on.
Okay, well, don't get hit.
And if it's not happening, well, wait a minute. And if it's not happening, then we need a new economic development director, because every year we should see growth. Who have they brought in? How much money has this company brought into the city? That has to be your pot of gold.
Okay.
So a business that brings in 300 jobs but doesn't have as high of an impact on revenue is not as good as an economic development plan that brings in tons of revenue and maybe only two jobs.
Right.
Okay, so that's that's what I'm trying to get at.
You're absolutely right on that, and I I'm going to caution you a little bit that if you tell somebody if they don't bring in 300 jobs, they're going to lose their job, they won't take the job, but I get your point. You want measurables, and that's what the part of the SMART goals is, maybe just not so, you know, specific. But, okay, so, all right, I'm ready to move on, but we've got that. We want all city, and we want money, and we want it by July 1.
Yes.
Okay. I'm trying to get through this. Okay, so we have talked about roundtable stakeholder, and some of you who have been around a little bit, a lot longer than I have, remember the developer roundtables, so maybe if you could give some feedback about that. I don't know if you ever participated in that, Mr. Barco, you know, or some, Victoria, I think you know about it, but I'll let others speak on that for now. What are you looking for in that? What would, what do you think would work? So I'm Joe Developer. I'm angry at the city because I can't do this. I'm going to go to this roundtable, and what do I what do I think's going to happen? Am I going to get?
Probably same things the rest of time, but you know, you get to a point where, you know, it can solve some, you know, have some solutions, but it all comes back to the city. Is the city open to it? I mean, it doesn't do any good to sit down with people that they're not even paying attention to. They're going to do what they want to do, and that's it. You need, I would like to see our city change its, the way it thinks, you know, instead of, when someone walks in there, they get all the reasons that it's not going to work. To have a can-do attitude and say, hey, let me come beside you, and we're going to try to get you through this and save you money and make it as easy as we can on this. I think that that kind of an attitude would go a long way, and if you don't have that, you're wasting, you're spinning your wheels, going out, hiring an economic developer to go bring people into the city, and then the city's not friendly to them, so.
So in other words, what you're saying, I think what Jimmy was asking is what was it intended to look like? Because that was before my time. Did you ever sit in on one of those?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's what he's asking. What did it look like when you walked? What did it look like when you walked in?
All kinds of stuff. It could be James... You know, it could be, impact fees are too high, or that they're asking them to do things involving traffic that are over and above, and, you know, you have to do this intersection that's nowhere near their project.
So, I think that one of the differences, potential to go forward with something like this, is that when you have somebody whose success or failure in their role, like a department or a person with the economic development, when they are sitting in such meetings, they actually can take an adversarial position and an advocate position for the business owners, in which case, they are going to now go, "Why are you doing that? Why is this happening? Why can't we move this through? Why isn't it as easy?" And I think it becomes a different kind of dynamic in the city when you have that, so long as the goals are there and the person's own job requirement really sits with being on that side of the business holder. And then, I think they can become very successful.
So, yeah, so, I think, you know, I agree. I don't want to look backwards, okay? I think that the one thing that this council has going for it is vision, okay? And we have... We all see economic development as critical in order to move forward with the city and all of the other goals that we have. We also are in a position to leverage our relationships. I know Greg has a ton of relationships, Dion, you know, I do. Tom, everyone here has relationships with a developer, a business owner, whomever, that we need to leverage those relationships and say, "Look, we need you to come..." I don't want to hear about, "Well, I've tried it in the past," this and that. We need to leverage our relationships and build that trust. I am extremely confident in Sharon and her team in being open and willing to listen, willing to take, you know, constructive criticism, open to new ideas, open to changes, and I think that that's where we need to focus. We need to focus on the can-do. This is what we can do. This is the council we have right now, it is the directors that we have right now, it is the vision that we have, and I think we need to leverage those relationships that we have in the community to get people to the table, and then have them see the momentum continue from those conversations, and have them see, they're gonna be our advocates, they're gonna be the people that go out into the community and say, "Man, I sat down with these people, and I'm so pleased with what I walked away with. They're willing to work with us, they're willing to make changes, they're willing to listen." That's what we need to get going right now.
There's an anecdote from a podcast, City Managers Podcast, that I shared around that I think is relevant here, which is, there was a business, ironically Dutch Bros, in Glendale, Arizona, that the city manager of Glendale, Arizona, was on this podcast, and this company could not get it put in in this particular place, because it required like a 100-foot curb cut or something like that. And they were stalled for a long time, long time, long time. Finally, the city manager took a look at it and couldn't understand why this would hold up this business, and so, he put the city engineer in his car and drove him around the city, and said, "Isn't that a less-than-100-foot cut over there in that business, and over there, and over there, and over there, and over there, and over there?" So, do we have that unsafe of a city? Is this really, you know, a thing? And that's the kind of being an advocate to go, "Okay, let's not just look at the way something is written all the time. Let's look at what the overall desire is for us in a city, and what makes the most sense, and where the common sense can be." And I thought it was very enlightening when I heard that.
Kind of history, the EDC was the one that would drive those in the past, getting these roundtables together with the businesses and getting direction, along with the city. I think one thing more recent that I was a part of, you know, Jimmy, you were a part of that too, was the Economic Development Strategic Group. And that group brought the plan of Sharks Ice Downtown and the 536, which is 536 acres in Gilroy Gardens. You put these people together, this group, and we see the results of that. And that's what's critical about this position. We have groups, whether it's a chamber, Visit Gilroy, that are in place, that were at the table before, that are really ready to go. When we say "go," they're strategic in how they look at business and what they're doing, and helping businesses engage in Gilroy and work through those things. And it's critical that those relationships, talking about those relationships, that those are fostered in this process. They're in place, and that's the exciting part about this, that we can manage this, because we got the people.
The podcast was great. I listened to it. Thank you for suggesting that. I keep hearing over and over and over, "Relationships, relationships, relationships." I think that's what a roundtable does, right? So, developers come in, they get to sit down, they get to know the community development team and the public engineering team better. The public, the community development team, in some cases, gets to rely on the private sector for questions that they may have with it. It might not have anything to do with their project, but they're developing relationships. The other thing it does is it holds each other accountable. So, when you're in a room and you get to know somebody, it holds them accountable, holds our community development folks accountable when need be, and it holds the developers accountable, because they're all sitting in the same room, sharing information, getting to know each other, instead of having an invisible barrier in between them. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
One other comment that I would like to make is, you know, if we're looking at this, and I think we are all seriously looking at this development director, economic development director, we already have in place a manager, right? And so, we've heard things about advocate and things like that. That's a critical role that is already in place, in that, you know, you've got the overarching, you know, the bigger picture from the director, and then the nuts and bolts from the manager, right? And so, that is something that we already have in place. And so, we're kind of a step ahead there in that process, I think, you know, utilizing Victoria to the best advantage underneath this director.
And I'm really glad you made that point, because I know what we're talking about here makes it sound like that nothing's working right. But actually, a lot of things are working right. I think it's worked better. Our special event permit process has been revamped, and we got a lot of support from council with the zones and the barricades and things like that. Had a great event this weekend, saved a ton of money on those, putting those programs on. Victoria's been very successful in doing those kinds of things. If you're just right, we need more people, and we need someone who looks at the very large economic development picture, and then, you know, other positions that can help with some of the other things. So, yeah, it's not all broken, but it certainly...
ROI, 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 ROI. Sorry, I mean, it's really... I mean, no, it's okay to come to... No, seriously, to come and say, "I think," to a group like this and go, "You know what? There's this much potential out there, and we can go after it. It's gonna take a little bit of risk, it's gonna take some confidence that you're gonna have to build in us to do this, but if we do this, this, and this, we'll show you how we're bringing the money back, and put it in writing to you how we are." And I think you're going to get just like... Everybody will be like, "Yeah, absolutely." So, leaving money on the table is always bad, right? So, if there's ROI to be had, let's go get it.
Yeah, and I do think, you know, the role that Victoria has built, she basically handholds some of our groups with their special event permits. I think you're looking for that on a much larger scale and much bigger dollar signs associated with that, to drive economic development.
And I would like to just, since you did bring that up, you did receive a lot of kudos this weekend, when I was down walking around from those on the DBA. So, they said you were great to work with, and they're gonna use that footprint for other events, and so, you know, a kudos to you.
So, let's make another footprint for what you're talking about here. Okay, I have a few more things that you talked about as we designed this. This person's gonna have a lot of work to do. We talked about streamlined process. Maybe we'll hold off on that one until Sharon does her part, because economic development, I mean, everything is economic development. You can latch everything into it, but I think Sharon is gonna be able to talk to you more about that, if that's okay, that we do this one in a little bit. It certainly is a big role. And then, three is, I think you said, advocate program. Did you say that one? Who said the advocate program? You did. Okay. Talk a little bit about what you envisioned there, or what you've seen, or what do you think?
As I was trying to say, the... I don't know that it's always within a particular economic development department. I think that different people, even within the city, can take on that kind of a role to help certain businesses. And I think that you have one individual that you know is your champion, right? All the time, right? Even if it's... Even if you're having an issue in planning, in engineering, or what have it, you know that you can contact them, and they're gonna go at least find out what's going on, tell you what the next steps are. And then, proactively as well, when you are coming to the city and going, "Hey, I want to open this kind of business, or we want to bring this big company to here," you know that there's this one person. You're never gonna have to go, for sure, and talk to every little person when you have a real problem. Sure, you're gonna deal with those different individuals, but you always know you got that one person, and they're gonna be there for you, just like a counselor, like I said, in high school.
Right, counselor, so we remember that. Okay. All right, and then, this is something that we are listening about, and so many things we're doing, transparent process. And as you well know, some of you very well know, that the C Click Fix gives you transparency, which is good and challenging and good, but that's what you would like in any process, right? I mean, you talked about crime stats, you talk about response times, you talk about revenues, taxes, all that. Some people just want to know what's going on, and some people are really willing to dive in and spend some time on that, and we're making it easier for them. And I think Sharon's also gonna talk about some opportunities in community development as well, to have dashboards and kind of things that you're seeing with our crime stats and our, you know, Gilroy Connect. But again, that's a given to me anymore, is that whenever you have a program or something, people want to know what's going on. And a lot of times, they'll become your biggest advocates, because they'll be able to get their own truth or their own, you know, understanding about what's going on, not always us having to tell them. Okay?
Can I say one more thing on that?
Yeah.
I think it's bigger than some people just want to go dig into it. I think that some of the other cities that I've seen, I can't remember one off the top of my head, but it is a way to shout to everybody else that you are, you know, that this is important to you, that if it's, hey, crime, that this is important, but in the case of economic development, this is what's going on. This is how many we've put through. This is what's coming next month. And it really is a way for the community as a whole to feel good about what's going on, for you to have, anybody who's looking at the community to go, "Wow, they're really... They got... They're doing that much stuff." And then, staff as well, to go, "Hey, yeah, we're winning. We're, you know, we've got the thermometer, and we're getting to where we're supposed to get." So, I think it's deeper than just, there are some people who want to put sunlight on stuff, right? I mean, there are those people, I know that, but we should. We should shout from the rooftops when we're doing great things in the city.
And that's what the advocate... Sorry to interrupt. That's what the advocate can do, and that's what the advocate could help with making it transparent, because just if something's on a website, or just if something's a policy, it might not be transparent to everybody. Every investor, developer's gonna have their strength, their weakness. If they have a giant legal team, they can figure out the transparent process quick. But if they're out, they're also hammering nails while they're investing, they might not. And they might need that personal relationship and that advocate to help them get there.
I think you make up a good point, and those of us who have been in this business for a while, think of the word transparent different than what people do now, because when I first started, transparent was means they just put, you know, financial reports online, they put employee salaries online, and that was transparency. But that's not what we're talking about now, is it? We're talking about people who are really interested in seeing what our priorities are and where our promises are being kept.
And the communication is different, too. So, infographics that everyday citizens can basically look at and get a feeling of how a city is doing have become very popular across a lot of different cities in our general area, because I've gone and looked at them. I think Mountain View has some really good ones. And it just, it gives you this confidence, and it gives people outside the city, I think, especially when it comes to economic development, confidence that, hey, you got your you-know-what together, you know? If this is how it looks to everybody.
So, one of the other things with transparency is, I think it's important that when we recognize that we're not doing something as well as we had hoped to, that that's also something that we acknowledge publicly. Because I think if we just try to paint a, you know, a rosy picture, people don't buy it, right? And so, being vulnerable enough to say, "We're not hitting the mark here. I mean, we're trying, and we're pivoting, and we're gonna do A, B, and C to try to get us there." But I think that that is something that is also very important in today's world of transparency, is recognizing, because if you don't recognize, you know, if you don't acknowledge that you're not hitting the point, people think that, well, they think they're doing a good job, but they're really not. So, I think that that is... That vulnerability is a part of the transparency.
Perfect point. The best companies out there have a policy of brutal honesty.
Yep, 100%.
Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth, about the accountability, you know, letting people know that you're not doing so great. As a small business, folks, that some of us are in for ourselves, it's... That's all we do, because we're not perfect. So, acknowledging what you're not great at makes you better at other things.
I can assure you, we are hearing very loud and clear what we are not good about. The thing is, though, as you said, the acknowledgement, and I'll give you an example with the C Click Fix. I said on Saturday, we're pretty good about the C and the click, but right now, we're working on the fix. And we have numerous things that are way overdue, and we knew this was going to happen, but it's transparent. People know. And I'm getting feedback, and I know, I know, and so, they're waiting on me to see, well, what are you gonna do about it? That's what the real question is. What are you gonna do about it? And so, that's what you want to see in this process as well.
But you don't acknowledge it, people are thinking you're not doing it.
Or that you don't care. That's the worst thing somebody can think, is that you don't care. I'd rather be criticized for doing something bad or a bad decision, but please don't tell people they don't care, because I think most time, they do.
Just trying to do better goes a long way, and letting everyone know you're doing that.
Okay, we're doing great here. Councilmember Hilton talked a little bit about the commercial side because of streamlining. Anything you want to fit into here, Mr. Hilton, or I think you've said it a few times.
I didn't earn that title. I was just going back to why this is a director, and Terrence brought that out, so I want to put some sunshine on this, too. This should be a director position, and I think one of the reasons for that is that this person has to also fit in with your team, right? And so, that's gonna be important, because if they are gonna be, if they are gonna have a sprinkle of all these, and then send out Victoria to do the work on the ground, so to speak, they have to be able to, you know, really clearly tell the director of another department, like, "Can we meet after this meeting?" Like, I have some stuff that needs to get handled on that side, so I think that that's one of those important sides. That's really...
Ultimately, in business, you call that one throat to choke.
Yeah.
Okay? So, you know that basically, this is where... No, this is economic development? Boom, it's you, done.
Yeah, and you guys are a tight team. I get that. I mean, I've been doing this long enough that I understand that. You can't just force somebody into that position that we're not comfortable with and that you are not comfortable with either.
But you still have to do it by trial.
That was right. So, okay, I hope this was useful a little bit. It certainly helped me get more specific, and I think I have a good idea. Now, we're not done here by any means. This was just kind of just a start, but understanding, you know, what these things mean, even these words that maybe we think mean something, and they mean something to somebody else, is very helpful. Let's go to the next slide, and I'm gonna pull this one off, and we've still got a lot of work to do in economic development today, because I got some topics.
So, I have a question. So, is it clear, then, that one of the outcomes of today is, you have been given direction that when you are working on the budget, you need to incorporate an economic development director into that budget?
It's called implied direction. I'm here to listen, and if I came back without an economic development director, it means I probably wasn't listening. So, you can't give me direction today, because today's a workshop.
Okay.
But I talk to you all, I listen, and there's probably a pretty good chance there'll be a director in the budget that you get on Wednesday.
What's my one?
Twenty-six. Was this the next slide or? Okay, so let's talk a little bit about communications and engagement. I know we talked about that in transparency. We can dive into that one more or we can say we've, we're okay there for now. Again, your work's not going to be over on this, but. Okay? Good? Okay. And then we have, okay, let's talk measurables. I would like to have a couple of examples. Again, I'm not going to hold you to this, I'm not going to, you know, but you, everybody says the word accountability and they say this and that, but what does that really mean to this group in this position? I know we talked a little bit about, like, the need to bring that many businesses in, but I'm a little reluctant to go in that direction, because that's very.
Ambiguous.
Yeah, it's very obtuse, I guess is the word. So let's talk a little bit about what would a, somebody in this position, how would you want to measure their success?
So I'm, I'm going to just throw something out as an idea. This is where I think that we have an opportunity to do some networking with communities that have successful economic development departments. You know, I am not an expert in economic development personally. Maybe there are others that, that feel more comfortable with coming up with measurables that we should be, you know, putting out. I would be far more comfortable with reaching out to other organizations that have been successful and ask them, what are some reasonable measurable outcomes? That's.
Councilmember Marks.
Okay, there are two for me. To measure a successful economic development person, at the end of the year, I would like to see how much money that person has brought in, because that's why they're there. Is it through numerous businesses? Have they generated those empty buildings downtown, getting the property owners to turn them into prospering businesses? That's important. And then a roundtable, because I like that idea, but I like the idea that we want to see how it's improved. It's not just a gripe session. It's like if I have a concern that my permits are taking a long time, everyone, all the other, all the departments are present at the roundtable and we talk about why that's happening, we have that conversation. And then hopefully that business owner could walk out of that meeting feeling like, okay, this is my next step and this is what I have to do, this is what the city has to do. So I think if we can measure successes back from the business owners of saying, yeah, this really helped, you know, I am now on my way, then those are the two main things I would like to see out of this.
Councilmember Forgotti.
So I, I think again, this is where, and again, maybe it's different in, in the city and in, in business, but I would be looking in my hiring process to basically say, here's what our city is. What do you see the potential that's out there? And what do you see the plan to get there? And how do you see what kinds of measurements actually can be done? Because they take time to matriculate through anyway from, hey, we're going to have businesses come into town, they're going to build something, then we're going to have revenue and then it, so it's not always so quick and dirty, like we want the tax in this next year to be this high. So I, I would look to them to almost bid for how they're, what they, what they think the possibility is and how we're going to get there. And then I would look to see what the, what the ROI plan is. So again, there should be some point in time where we can identify that, because obviously this is incremental to our city budget that we already have, right? So it, it may not have an ROI horizon of a year, or it might not be an ROI horizon of two years, but we should be able to define what that is and then understand with the rest of the milestones and the rest of these things. And the, and the person helps drive what that would be. And then that also, when you then go, this seems reasonable, that's crazy, right? And so when you ultimately pick that particular person, you have the buy-in on this is how they see it going and they've already kind of signed up in a way that those are reasonable expectations, anyway.
Councilmember Maris.
So I, I agree with that to a certain degree, but I do think it's, you know, when we talk about measurable outcomes, I'm going to respectfully disagree a little bit with, with Councilmember Marks in that, you know, to show an increase in revenue, well, what is successful then? You know, maybe it's $10,000 more revenue, you know, for Councilmember Hilton, maybe it's $100,000 for Mayor Bozo, maybe it's a million for Council, you know what I'm saying? So I think that we need to have, you know, and it's, and to your point, the ROI, what is the, what is a realistic expectation? Because there is a long, but it shouldn't be too long, you know? And so that's why I agree with, with having, you know, kind of a bid process to it, but I think that we should have, again, going to partners and saying, what would be a realistic? Because we have to have a measurable. And if we say, for example, $10 million in three years, I'm just throwing something out, and they got to $6 million, but there are truly extenuating circumstances with the potential, right? I mean, so it's, it's a, it's not a hard and fast cut and dry, but, but, but I think that we need to lean into some experts into how we measure those outcomes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. So I, I'm going to throw two things out there that, that just from, from what I've been a part of, that I can see, I can see the impact. One of them is jobs. I hear that quite often, that people just want more jobs here. So it doesn't mean that it necessarily is like the top one or the bottom one, but somewhere in there, I want to hear, I want to hear a jobs report of Gilroy, Gilroy specifically. And then the, the next one of that would be property tax, or property tax rules. I know that we get information on that, but to me, that, you know, increased property taxes could be an overall increase or it could be because we had a vacant lot at that corner and now it's being developed. So how, and, and to me, that builds a story. And, and a great short story is, is what just came to the Planning Commission the other night is Heatwave. I mean, great local group, you know, they're, just their story that they gave to the Planning Commission, I didn't even realize the, the depth of that story. But, you know, they're building their footprint and, you know, they are small, like small business owner and now they're going big. And they chose Gilroy to be their, you know, their, basically their corporate headquarters, expanding their footprint, getting more property tax for us, having more jobs. I would love to see that kind of story be told, but I, I, the measurable success though, like, I want to hear this stuff, like, frequent, like, pretty, like, monthly, whether it's an off agenda report or something, but, I mean, this, there are stories like this that happen all the time and I would love to hear the, the impacts of that. Or what we can see in six months, we're going to see the property tax rule, you know, get this much higher because this much vacant land is being now converted into something.
Councilmember Marks.
Okay, I, yes, I do agree with you, Zach, on that. It'd be nice to have these reports. I just want to clarify my comment that Councilmember Ramirez brought up. I'm not looking for a certain dollar amount every year, but I am looking at the graph. It's going up, 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 because granted, things happen economically that you might not have a lot. But if we had a director that came in every year saying, well, nothing, nothing new happened, nothing new opened up, nothing, you know, I begin to wonder, well, what's this person doing? Are they even going out trying to attract businesses to come here? I think that person, another measured success would be, you know, the advocacy part of this. How many people are they walking through? You know, you just can't sit back and say, well, Gilroy doesn't have the type, this type of demographic for a certain business, as I've been hearing. It's like, no. Prove to that business that we are the right demographic, just to bring them in, so, okay?
To Zach's point and talking about various metrics, that's why I was speaking earlier about understanding that there's a progression of, of things that you're looking for and there's multiple metrics and they, and they evolve over time, right? One leads to the next, the other, so in case of heat wave, it's okay, there's a plan that's going into place for X amount of square footage. And so we, there's a, in, in business, right, at a certain level, you, you, especially you have what are called executive dashboards, because there's just too much data to, to be able to look at all the time. And so you have, you know, between three and six things that are your main steerage that you're always looking at. And for, for senior people like yourself and for council members and whatnot, to always be able to look at those and then understand how we think they're going to relate is super important. So you're always looking at seeing, okay, our, our average quarterly square footage growth in commercial is, is here. Here's what we've kind of targeted, because the economic development director said, this is where we think we need to be to be on track. And this is how much our, our property tax revenue is now, and by this quarter, we think this is where it's supposed to be and we're pacing on track, or whatever it is, sales tax or what have you. And I think that's a really important part of, of running some of this stuff, which should run like a business, to be able to, everybody can look at it, have the same set of data and be able to understand the health of what's going on and be able to see what's could be coming.
Revenue, revenue, revenue.
Yeah, because I'll, I'll just throw that in there, or throw this in there too, is that, remember, we got that last report back and for the first time ever, our property tax was higher than our sales tax. Well, to me, that doesn't surprise me, because for all the developments, whether it's residential, industrial, commercial, I mean, we're just, we're developing vacant land. We have a ton of it in Gilroy. So to me, it's not, it's, it's no surprise, you know, but then when you drive by the outlets, the ones that run our ride along 101, it's empty. Well, it's like, well, I, I can see why sales tax is down, but I know why property tax is up, so I, yeah.
Again, the other word, relationships, and that's, that's a measure, a measurable for success of that person is the relationships that are fostered by what they're doing in the community, tapping into bringing businesses in, the expectation that it's built on relationships. So it's critical to that.
I know we talked, I'll say it one more time. I know we talked about revenue being flat and it doesn't sound so great, but when, when you consider revenue being flat and you throw in inflation, it's not great at all. So that's why we got to focus on revenue, in my opinion.
Another aspect, and I don't know if this is, you know, incorporated here or under a different category, but I think that one of the challenges that we have with our economic development that has not been discussed is the unhoused population. And so, you know, we've talked a lot about the gateways, which is, you know, critical as, as potential investors come into the city, you know, let's, let's create a gateway that is welcoming, but I think it's, it's also somehow working with other departments with the unhoused and in making sure that we are addressing those needs of the unhoused so that we're not, you know, having investors come in and seeing encampments or litter or, you know, environmental hazards or, or whatever are the byproducts of the unhoused population. So it's, it's someone that is able to look at all of the factors that impact, I mean, you know, Councilmember Marks talked about, you know, the advocacy in terms of, look at our demographics, yes, we do have the demographics, but it's, you know, it's looking at all of the different things that are either something that we can capitalize on or something that is a challenge and being able to work with other stakeholders in addressing those challenges.
The point that you're really making too is economic development is just not the economic development department. It's also your police department, your fire department, your public works department, because you're right, and I've heard it, I'll be honest about it, that, remember we used to have the encampments of Leesley? And you're trying to show somebody a property here and you don't take that exit. I've heard realtors going down Monterey instead. That's, that's not what you want, obviously. Joe?
The measurement of, of customer service. So one of the things that a lot of service-oriented businesses do is they have right at their touch point, very quick and dirty and easy way, you might have seen it even at Customs and whatnot, where they've got a smiley face, you know, and a unhappy face right there when you're done talking to somebody. So it's very front of mind and very simple. I think again, when you're talking about having a, a simple dashboard, that you can get into the whys and everything else somewhere else, but you at least get a sense, right, that you have, you have a little bit of predictive analytics, you have the ability to understand where you, you know, where you've been, you're starting to trend a certain way, and very simple metrics to, to, to get a, a feeling for how the community feels about engaging with the city, right? Or even, we just talked about how the city looks, right? So you can get a very good indication by a, a very simple, again, not these complex surveys, but simple surveys that you send out, just say, hey, what do you think today? You know, of how everything looks around the city? And there's enough volume, especially if you do the surveys really, really well, to be able to, to indicate that you're heading in the right direction or you're, now you've headed down a little bit, we better take a look why. And so all of these indicators in an executive dashboard, because they come from all different areas, for economic development, I think are key.
And our police department already does this, which is good. Anybody that calls 911 automatically gets a text back, you know, hours later, a day later, or whatever. How was your service? Did our, did our staff member help you with your problems? You know, and then they, you know, they had that one question on there too, where it says, you know, what's your biggest concern in the city? You know, so, and I, that's never, none of that stuff's ever been shared back with us, but it's already, it's, it's in part of our culture here, already to do that.
Yeah, we do that with our front counter, folks who come through the information desk, they do surveys there as well, but, yeah.
Yeah, I highly encourage finding an executive dashboard that allows that to be shared super easily across the board, again, to that level of transparency and especially as you win. I mean, it's so great, you know, you're like.
Okay. Okay, what else did we have on here? We talked communications, engagement, measurables. We have some of this. Obviously, we have a ton of work left to do here, but it's kind of, it's a start. And, and then we talked about job creation, revenue. I've heard that loud and clear, revenue is very important. New business opportunities, existing business support. What does that mean?
Roundtable.
Roundtable, roundtable. When we went through COVID, existing business support, we met a whole different thing at that point. We, yeah.
I, we have, I think we have already good examples of that. I had a relationship with, with one of the vendors or one of the businesses in downtown that just kept texting me and texting me and texting me, and I was able to connect them with Victoria. So, you know, existing business support, that was a perfect example of somebody who jumped into a position that maybe wasn't quite ready or had the different expectations, you know, but it's nothing that I, I'm familiar with, there can help with and, you know, she had a wealth of knowledge to be able to pass along to that person and, and, you know, I'm not super analytical about it, but I can tell the difference between this person's attitude today than it was even a year ago. And like, there's their knowledge and like little things that they could do, so I think that's a perfect example of what we already do, do really good at.
I hear, I hear some of you say it, and I say it too. Have you talked to Victoria? Yeah, you have a problem, you talk to Victoria. And if they have it, you know they're not on the right path. And if they have, you feel pretty good that they're going to, they're going to get some help. That's what you're talking about here too.
How would you define business support? Maybe this is the right place or not, about, you have pre, pre-existing plans about business opportunity zones or things like that? So when investors do come to town, they know exactly what's available to them?
Do we have, no, we don't have pre-existing, but those were examples of outcomes. You could have that as, you know, as part of your work plan, development of X, Y, and Z, but no, we don't, we don't really have a robust system like that. Some cities do. Okay. All right, and then reputation. I think that goes without saying. Okay, so let's get you a little more specific on things that you had originally discussed as projects. And we've already heard some of them. And let's turn this on. So we have talked about opportunities and we know as a city, we actually have a lot of assets. We are about a half billion dollar corporation, if you think about all our assets, streets, buildings, roads and everything. Most people don't think of that, but they think of like a $70 million general fund, but we are, we're a very large corporation and we have a lot of stuff. And we have a lot of stuff that's, we're looking to utilize. And one is the Gilroy Sports Park, the Gilroy Gardens. And those two are identified as the record, the priorities for economic development. And we've made, we also had up there for a while, Gourmet Alley. We don't have that up there anymore, because we, we've completed that project and it was really kind of activated for the first time this weekend. They're still learning, they're still trying to figure out how to use that in future festivals and, but it's, it's on its way. It's on its way. It's not mature yet, it's a teenager, but it's on its way.
So Gilroy Gardens is an asset, but it's also a responsibility and burden?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a very large responsibility. I, I'm not going to use the word burden, but yeah, it is a big piece of property, 536 acres of wildland, amusement park that the city owns, a fire station that the city owns and a lot of ideas about what to do with it, but we haven't found a real true investor yet.
I was specifically talking about the amusement park, not the entire.
Yeah, the aging amusement park with some unfunded liabilities and deferred maintenance and things like that. Yeah, yeah, those are all challenges that everyone is very aware of and. Um, yeah, yeah, those are all challenges that, uh, everyone is very aware of and, and such. But when we talk about opportunities out there, a couple of years ago, we did put out an RFP, and we had two proposals, and we ran through those, and eventually they did not come to fruition. Uh, we also had Great Wolf at one time, looking at that property. That did not, that did not go to maturity either. Um, and now I think it's time to start doing that again. Um, we are very fortunate with that property. It is unique, especially in Silicon Valley, and, uh, one of the things that I would like to put on the work plan is that we restart those discussions and that process. And I think with this group, especially many of you being, uh, you know, in the business world, can really be helpful, uh, in, in, you know, in getting something going there. Any thoughts on the gardens? Any thoughts on the sports park right now? Anything? Let me talk about the sports park real quick.
Jimmy, can you, can you on the sports park part, uh, describe for me and maybe for others too, in terms of where it sits within the city and what we see the future and how the service area and all of this city part?
Yeah, it is, most people don't know, that is not in city, in the city. Um, and I learned through C Click Fix, I went over, there was a faucet, uh, that was broke, and I clicked on it, sent it in it, so this address is not valid, because it's in the county, but it is ours. So, uh, that has been in place for, ever since the sports park was purchased, uh, there's been some Lafco discussions with that, long time ago Andy was involved with that. But now, uh, we are looking to develop it, uh, and have services provided on that property, and we may at some point have to discuss if we want to try to annex it, or whatever Lafco has in mind for how annexation works, uh, going forward. Uh, it's very important for us to make sure that the economic development that's happening over there, we benefit from. And you don't have to be in that area very long off of the Monterey exit and, um, and 101, to see there's, there's so much opportunity over there. And I have had phone calls from investors saying, what do you, when's you gonna build that rink? When's that gonna go in? They're thinking already of, you know, restaurants and hotels and things like that. So, uh, the key for us right now is to get this hockey rink off the ground and dug in the dirt, and, um, I think you do that, then a lot of that will follow, but it may be a good area to have a strategic plan. And one of the reasons is we don't own everything over there. And we are having on here at some point, actually, it's on this slide, or the next slide, about Caltrans and their involvement, and in a lot of places, uh, we take, cities can take on those maintenance responsibilities, and there's benefits to doing that, especially in a high, uh, highly visible area that impacts your economic development. Uh, you want to do that carefully because you're taking on a responsibility that is your, not yours, but you may look at it as an investment instead. And so that area is the Wild West for economic development. I really think years from now, it will be something very special for Gilroy, but it's , uh, still in its infancy.
Can I ask, can you please just kind of, just give an overarching explanation of how the relationship with, uh, the city, it's, you know, the, the city sports park, but it's owned by Lafco, or it's, um, not annexed in the city? How that relationship works?
Can I, can you help Andy? You, you put that together a long time ago and?
Yes, it's, um, it's complicated and not easy to understand, uh, intrinsically, but basically, the property's owned by the city, it's in the county jurisdiction. When the city bought it and started developing it, and this goes back in the, uh, nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, ninety-eight era, uh, it could not be annexed. We tried, actually, because there were intervening properties, A, and B, because, uh, Lafco was very concerned about, uh, the fact that there was agricultural production on the properties, which is a typical, uh, thing that they try to preserve. Um, since that time, intervening properties have actually been annexed. Uh, we are allowed to service the properties, however, because we have a master plan, and that master plan actually predates a Lafco rule that prevents, uh, running utilities outside of your city, except in emergencies. But we are, in a sense, grandfathered from that because we started doing it before they changed the rule about 20 years ago. So right now, there's no real impediment to our developing the property. I mean, there are physical issues there, there, there are tenants, there is, uh, you know, flooding issues, there are various kinds of, uh, issues relating to the land itself, but there are not actual regulatory issues with Lafco at the moment.
Who gets the property tax revenue from it?
County.
Okay, so they, they get the property tax?
But we're using it for public purpose, so there really is no property tax. It's the sales tax you, you really wanna? We don't get the sales tax, no.
Not yet.
Never, not until you annex it.
That's what I mean, yeah.
And that's where, everything around it is where really you start to get that, if there's hotel rooms and et cetera, et cetera.
And to that point, when we started down this road five years ago, we actually never claimed we would make a dollar off this rink, never said we would make any tax revenue, because we knew of the challenges of having an annex to the city. We, that council and myself and staff felt that was a, uh, seed for economic development and that side of town in general.
Kind of, uh, geographically describe what, you know, across the street from that is city?
Yes.
You know, and it extends out to the, um, I don't know what that park is called for, uh, the restaurants and the hotel and?
Yeah, the travel park area? That's all city.
All of that is city, so any kind of, um, building that is or development that happens because of the Sharks Ice being there, that is done along that, then we do benefit from those spaces.
Exactly.
But wouldn't, sorry, wouldn't, wouldn't we be highly incentivized, um, if there is a Sharks Ice facility there that is creating sales tax? Quite a bit of sales tax to bring that into the city?
Uh, Andy, we've talked about this, and I, I don't know, there's some trade offs in doing that, and it was not the easiest property to get mitigated and things like that.
It, it's something that probably should be looked at now. If the Sharks Ice, assuming the Sharks Ice project does go forward, then annexation becomes much more sensible. Well, you never know what kind of fight you'll have with Lafco, but we, um, but, but it should, uh, but basically, we have a master plan which calls for development, and we have purchased agricultural property use as mitigation, or purchased conservation easements over the Van Dyke property a couple of years ago, specifically for the purpose of mitigating agricultural impacts on the sports park. So that issue ultimately should go away.
And maybe that's important to us to explore annexation of that. I think the climate with Lafco is a lot different than it was in just some years ago. They've had a lot of changes.
The timing is certain, will certainly be better in the next few years than it has been. You know, we went to Lafco some years ago about the sports park to begin with. Their initial reaction was, why don't you put the Sharks Ice thing somewhere else? Don't put it in your sports park. Why don't you put it in an infill location or put it downtown or something? That made no sense at all to us, because we have a master plan, and so we, we, we developed the, we modified the master plan, we did a supplemental EIR in 2019 to have the sports park, uh, be the host for the Sharks Ice facility, which is the only sensible thing. Uh, hopefully, with the development of the Sharks Ice, so the Lafco attitude would be more reasonable, and, uh, it would be a fait accompli, we hope. So the whole idea of annexing and looking at economic development there really would make more sense.
Okay, we have the Gilroy Gardens. I think we, we've discussed that we should be moving forward and, and should restart some of those discussions with someone or whoever that can help us best utilize that property. It is a great asset and, uh, and, uh, one that's, uh, underutilized for its location and opportunity.
Are we talking about it in its entirety, which also could still even encompass an acquisition of the amusement park, or no?
It could, we, that's what the case was the first time that we went through that. So, uh, that would be council direction and what that encompasses, and so.
Okay, just wanna make sure it's on the table.
Okay, uh, one of the things that I wanted to bring up, and this was mentioned as well in February, is the city does own some assets, and, uh, some of these businesses that we're in, do we want to be in these businesses? But I'm not asking you today to tell me if we should sell Old City Hall, but I want to talk about the philosophy and what our economic development strategy is, because we did talk to council a while ago about the roof at Old City Hall, and you made a business decision that the amount of money invested, you didn't think you would really get a return on, or it was, and so that's a, that's a way to look at it. The air conditioning, what'd you say?
Another building.
One of our roofs is broke, I don't know. Uh, so I don't know that we have to talk about these individually, but I think when you're looking at economic development opportunities and you have assets that you're not utilizing, are you looking to get somebody to do that for you? Are you looking to get rid of the asset? Because there are some assets that we have staff would like to get rid of.
I think that, uh, again, back to whomever becomes an economic development director, it becomes part of their toolkit, right? Um, so you don't tie their hands, but I can very much see a situation like other cities have done where we, uh, you know, find better owners for certain properties, obtain some revenue from those, uh, identify other properties that, uh, may be in need of, uh, of purchase in a way that wouldn't be financially viable to any other business person necessarily, right? And even the city takes a $200,000 hit or what have you in order to, uh, to find another developer, to find some other bid process, to build in, uh, a different type of business or housing or mixed use or whatever it may be. And I know we have a number of those kinds of, uh, properties, uh, you know, in the downtown, Monterey corridor and whatnot, uh, even just right next to the GDBA building, we've got that, uh, one little mini mall boarded up area in particular, uh, and, and this is just completely hypothetical, but it's, yeah, if you were able to divest in one other thing, invest in something else, you're, you're losing money with a longer term ROI for the city in the understanding that, okay, you put it together with a GDBA, and now you've got this whole, you know, this whole corner that you can now have, and somebody can bid to come in on that. Some of these other really nice properties that we have that we want to keep historic or what have you, we can, uh, you know, deed restrict them or first right refusal, there's all kinds of different things we can do. And I think it should be in the toolkit for an economic development director to look at that and go, this would make sense, and, uh, and could be, you know, revenue neutral or what have you.
Um, I, I hundred percent agree, it has to be in their, their toolkit, because I'm gonna be measuring them on the success of that, of utilizing these. If they're not constantly talking about these and the bigger opportunities, not just sitting on it, but like, what are you, what are you thinking about it? Like, we have ideas, I, I've met with Terrence and we've talked about, you know, different things and pulling things together. Um, I expect them, uh, to be, we're giving them a gift. That's the whole reason why we said that we didn't want to do the HVAC, is to be able to, hey, these, these are, these are things in your toolbox to be able to leverage. Um, and I, you know, I would, I would, I would expect that, and that's, that's part of the one of the measurables I'll be going for.
Anyone else? Okay. Got a couple more before we take a break. Okay, let's talk about the gateways. Uh, we just, a few minutes ago, talked about exiting, uh, 101 in Leavesley, uh, we talked about the Gilroy Garlic, or, uh, was it RV Park? Not RV Park, but, um. Yes. Uh, those areas that certainly could use some love and attention. And one of the things that ties into here, I have highway exits, we have three of them, Hecker Pass, Tenth and Monterey and Leavesley. Uh, we have Monterey Road, both, uh, mostly southbound, but a little bit northbound once you get off the exit. And then you also talked about in, uh, February about arts in Adopter Road, Spot Trail. But I want to actually start this backwards part of the slide. And one of the reasons is that we are, we have a pavement program, project on the Monterey Frontage Road and Monterey that will repave from Leavesley all the way down, and there's a section below the, uh, the overpass that is not ours. And so of course, at that time, you would want to do the whole thing. But you do the time doing, uh, you know, the road, and then you look up and there's weeds everywhere, and they're not ours, they're not our responsibilities, but I think that's something that we should discuss at some point about these areas that are so important to us, uh, that we take the responsibility, even though, as you said, maybe it's not financially immediately a good decision, like, we're not gonna get our money back in that, but it gives you what you're looking for when people get off the exits. And I think someone like Caltrans and even Valley Water would be pretty happy to have some of these things taken off their, um, their plate, uh, because I can tell you, the general public does not care who owns it. Um, they just want to see it clean.
Will they pay for that somewhat? I mean, would they offset it or? No? Okay.
So, and, and I would like to see this as a, as a priority, you know, I, this is not something that I would like to see on the list for this economic development director. Um, I don't want to wait that long. I want to, this is something that, um, that I firmly believe can be, um, can begin immediately.
And I would agree with you, this is an economic development project, but not necessarily led by economic development, and we have public works folks and things like that.
I don't think you're gonna get much resistance here on this panel, and I, I drove by there just yesterday or the day before, and yeah, it is absolutely in need of love.
And you, you can tell the, just from driving on 101 from here all the way down south, uh, you can tell the, the cities that have taken it over, the smaller ones like Paso Robles and Santa Barbara and different areas, you can tell, you're like, there's no way Caltrans is dealing with, there's no way they put those pavers, you know, in the exits and stuff like that. Um, but I, I, I agree, I think we should do it, and another thing that I go back to is the C Click Fix along the U, Union Pacific, you know, it's, it's within our city, so like you said, nobody cares whether we own it or they own it or whatever, they just want to see it cleaned up. Um, but, you know, there's, there's often times where we could say, okay, well, I, I'm not gonna go over that fence and go pick up that trash because it's not mine, it's on their property. I just think that we gotta move away from that. We just gotta, just go get it. Like, and, and I think this is an easy one to do, and like I said, I don't, I don't, I don't want to put this on their, on their bench at all, I think we can do it. And with Valley Water, we do it already, right? I mean, we're developing these trails, and Valley Water's like, that's great, activate the trails and then take care of them for us. Um, you know, let, let's do it. So I think we already have, I think we already have the good relationships to do it.
Real life example, I've, I've been talking to Jimmy lately about the roundabout out on Hecker Pass right before Gilroy Golf Course, right? So I got cornered on Saturday by some wine re-owners that live just down the road from there, and I got into, I started getting into the, uh, ownership of Caltrans, nobody cares. Nobody cares. Pull the weeds. Yeah, we have to get it done. Yeah, we, we have to develop those relationships, even if it comes at a bit of a cost, because it'll pay off later.
Okay, any other beautification? Uh, I've, on the C Click Fix Act, uh, excuse me, C Click Fix App, I get a lot about signage right now, and I don't know if you noticed, we put new signage out here, so we're in the process of replacing some other things like that, but, um, uh, that's, uh, that should be more of a formal program, I think.
Yeah, I don't know that the, I mean, some of the wayfinding is a little bit much, but if it's going to exist at all, it has to look good, right? And every sign that says, welcome to Gilroy, can't be faded and looking, you know, like it's 10 years old. And, uh, you know, there should be an economical way that we can refresh those within our own city, or somehow that, you know, every two, three years, four years, the sun fades and stuff, just put another thing over it. And the, and you probably saw on C Click Fix, even the street signs, you know, same thing.
Um, you know, the other area that we might want to look at, um, you know, when I was down at the Wine Walk, um, talking to Jeff Orth, and he was saying, you know, we're trying to work with the building owners and getting the grommets put on the, the building so that we can do lighting, you know, along, and somehow enhance that, um, alley so that it's, you know, a little bit better, a little bit higher level, that type of thing.
I think one of the things we could do with Gourmet Alley and Railroad Alley, since we're trying to activate both those spots and we put all that money into it, is maybe once or every other year, we, um, slurry seal it, right? It's like a fresh coat of paint. I mean, I, I can't stand the fact that they, that contractor went back there and dug up those holes and then repaved it, and we're like, oh, it'll look fine, it'll fade away. No, it doesn't. It doesn't look good. I mean, and there's plenty of other really good, um, uh, you know, examples like in the mountains and Truckee and stuff like that, which is a great tourism destination where, you know, they do this annually because they get those hardcore winters in the summers and all that stuff, but it's just, put a, put a top slurry seal on top of it, um, it'll go a long ways to look, look refreshed, and it might be one of those things too, that, you know, this is something that the city can say, that, that this is what we did. And so when it comes to some of those beautification, you know, of the neighbor, our neighbors, right? Um, you know, they might feel the, you know, the energy to, to do, to do the same that we did, you know, if we're the ones that are leading it.
I just think we're gonna have to make some hard choices, maybe at some point here. I mean, there's a lot of would love to haves, um, and, uh, as much as I love downtown, and it is important as a, as a place, we have a larger city that we have to, that we have to address, so when it comes down to brass tacks with all the bad news that he hasn't given us yet, um, you know, weeds from Caltrans area, you know, might have to take precedent over, you know, Gourmet Alley, which it's great and everything, but what's it really going to bring to us comparatively? So we have to make some judgment calls, I think, if that's gonna be coming up.
Definitely. And our thoughts on the gateways? I think we're pretty clear on what we're looking to achieve there.
Yeah, just clean them up.
Yeah.
And code compliance to the businesses, uh, you know, I'm, you already know I'm signage guy and everything else, and, you know, horrible corners and things like this, because it, it all speaks to our front door, right? corners and things like this, because it all speaks to our front door, right? And sometimes, yes, the trash, or the trash from homeless, that all seems very obvious, but then there are things that we just get used to and get apathetic to, that happen from businesses themselves, that they don't even understand, that it just, it looks hacky and not good, and doesn't have a good impression for the city. And a lot of really, really good cities that you go into, you don't even necessarily, when you're there, recognize why they look to feel so good and look so good. It's because they've put a lot of attention into what they allow, what they don't allow, how they enforce, the code enforcement, all of these things. So we have to look at it all the way down the line.
And I agree with that. You know, I know it was unfortunate when some of the businesses had their windows broken out, but now the furniture store, they've been boarded up for too long, and now Sixth Street Studio is completely boarded up. So that does not present that we're a safe city, it's just, it's, I agree with you, Terrence, it's just people walk and they think, hmm, what's wrong with the city? Why is everything boarded up?
We have, we have a sign ordinance that doesn't allow A-frame signs and these banner signs, but we just don't enforce it. And the, the A-frame signs are everywhere now.
A-frames are banned, we're getting way better on the banners.
We've done some enforcement, I'd love to do more. That's where you, the brass tacks you talk about comes into play, so. Okay, we have one more slide, and it is simply a summary of what I thought you might talk about in some ways, or Victoria and I thought you might talk about, is that we're looking probably for a standalone department. We've talked about goals and measurables and success. Now, like I said, we're just starting here, but it's a good start, it gets us in the right direction. Staffing with expertise, and of course, these positions require contracts for certain things. But that's, again, up to the person who ends up in that position to try to guide us, you know, what we need to be doing. And then we talked a little about incentives, and we'll talk about that as well, because one thing about incentives, they're not just monetary, time is money, reputation is money at times, and so time efficiency, jobs, tax revenue, you talk about those things, too, for your economic development.
To be clear, these are incentives to the businesses, not to anybody on the economic development team?
No.
Unfortunately, we can't do that in the city, right?
No, you really can't.
Okay.
And then city infrastructure, opportunities to use, to trade, to sell, to buy. We have some great properties that maybe we can utilize differently. And then fees, we'll talk a little bit more about fees. Community development is where, you know, developers come in, and we do have some incentive programs, but there is an old, like, Victoria stated, an old policy of number of jobs, number of those things that you're bringing in the city, you get a certain break, and that'll be something that we'll definitely be talking about with this person and as a group. And then lastly, I've heard ROI a few times, and cost benefit, and ROI is not just finances. It's also, like you talked about, our gateways, that we spent some money there, but we get it back because a business comes in nearby, or what have you, that generates good revenue for us. So that's a, it's a hard way to measure ROI, but it is definitely real. Okay, that concludes, and we're right on time and we're right on schedule. Does anybody else have any closing comments about economic development that they?
I do, and I think I know what you're talking, were you talking about the incentives for this director? Measurables?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I know what you're talking about. So the only thing I want to put out there on the table is, you know, we do have, I would, I would like to see some, maybe that could be measurables, but maybe it could be step increases, right? And I know that sometimes the directors are way different than the bargaining units, but I'd say we know, on the bargaining level, you know, we know you come in at step A, and if you want to meet step E, there's time to service, there's certain measurables that you have to get to each level. I do think that that's something that we could maybe look at, and maybe there's other examples out there where city directors have done this, too. But I just want to say that, you know, we do have that process already internally. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, let's take a break and come back 10 after, 15-minute break.
All right. Good job.
Up full Alpas store stations, you know, Shrarma, I mean, it's, it's like a whole operation. Is it not? I mean, I get that PD is busy everywhere else, but like one roll up on that would be, you know, so much different than a slap on the wrist of, you know, code enforcement, let's say. It was just like, hey, it's a move along because I know you've had issues with that on Santa Teresa and First Street and Mantelli and down by the park there. I'm just wondering, we don't do any of that right now on some of these big issues that we have that are repetitive?
Yeah, and I know several of the ones, I think I mentioned to you, when we went out there, because our code enforcement officers do go up and talk to them and ask for identification. They're different people, so we do give them warning with every one of them, but they actually have been different folks. I know the setup looks very similar.
But it's never PD, though. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this topic so far? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. So next, we have some notes from the previous meeting about new business process. And we talked about new businesses coming into town. Councilmember Hilton's talked about streamlining that process. And Karen, sorry, Sharon, has a couple of things that she would like to talk about here. Innovations and concepts that we will be adding to our work plan this year that we think can help. Very similar to the Gilroy Connect and other programs, so.
Regarding the in-house.
Let's go to the transparency first, the permit navigator.
Okay.
In the context of that.
I think the permanent navigator probably ties into a little bit of the in-house versus outsourced. Because we've looked at, you know, possible service delivery models and that, you know, that depends on the council direction. But having in-house plan review function would help to kind of serve as this permanent navigator. Because they will be here, they will be able to directly interact with the customers and they'll be able to review things over the counter and they can also directly collaborate with other city divisions and other city departments. So they can serve in this really permanent navigator role, you know, and I have done that in some of my prior cities. And about four cities ago, that was actually, I just kind of took on that role naturally, helping applicants to navigate the whole process. And they would naturally come to me as the point person because I wanted to get things done, you know. I would help them to go to different departments, division, even outside agencies too. Because a lot of the development projects have various outside agency submittals and you really need to understand the technical aspects of these things to be able to help them navigate that. So, you know, I think the second and third bullet probably kind of goes together, but it really depends on, you know, council's direction on the service delivery model.
Sharon, could you explain, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I do, I'm sorry. Could you explain why certain communities have decided to outsource versus in-source? And how some go back and forth and keep changing? What's, as a community development director, what is your reasoning for why you would want to in-source, outsource? Pros and cons, things like that?
Yes, and just based on my past experience, usually the very small cities tend to entirely outsource because they don't necessarily have enough activities, you know, to have full-time staff on board. And the really large cities, they have a really large team, so they don't necessarily do any outsourcing because they have enough people, you know, to take care of the workload. Because some people might be taking training or maybe out sick, but they have a really large team that can just absorb the workload. And it's usually the medium-sized cities, kind of like ours, you know, you'll have a, I guess I'll call it a hybrid model, where you generally have an in-house team that's, you know, like a core in-house function, but supplemented by consultants as needed to really address peak workload or unusual projects. So that's the service dealer models that I really have seen based on my experience.
Given, again, we, we as council members or even just people out in the community, even before I was a council member, we only hear the, you know, a lot of the feedback, the negative feedback and many things like this. We don't know if anything is necessarily endemic or even epidemic. But can you speak to when you are outsourcing, and we do use these outsourced partners, how you utilize, or if it's even available, a carrot and stick kind of approach to having an outside contractor? Are there metrics that they have to meet in order to get paid a certain amount? Or are they going to get penalized if they don't meet a particular metric? Is there anything like this, or it's just, hey, they got a contract and they're going to get this done? Or they're not going to get it done?
Yeah, actually, it's in the contract to meet certain turnaround times. And then they have been meeting the turnaround times. And generally, and that's the same process here too, the, the cost is based on the percentage of our plan check fees. And that's a very common setup for the contract.
So they don't have an incentive necessarily to get it done sooner, is what you're saying? There is no carrot to get things faster through the process? Or to have less steps? Or to have, you know, to not have things come back three, four, five, six times? I don't know how the whole process works, and I'll admittedly, I'll admit to that. But in terms of having a way to measure and then have a reason why I want to do it faster, not just get penalized when I do it slower, is there, is there anything like that? Or is there anything that can be like that?
There's an expediting option, and that's basically one and a half times the fees. And I've also seen this thing some other cities as well.
I don't think you understood what I said necessarily. I'm saying that it, they have to do things in a certain timeframe, I guess, like most contractors have to do. They have to get something done. They have to have certain parameters that you set up for how many times maybe they visit or what they have to do, or they can't go back more than twice. I don't know. But if they do a better job than you are expecting, and however you measure that, is there not a way that they, right, end up out of, and if not, can it be, Jimmy, incentivized to, to service the community in a better and faster way than they, than they just get by or under the bar that is, that they have to meet at least?
Maybe I'll answer it this way, you know, because they, they meet their turnaround times with each round. But I think the number of rounds, that just depends on really if the submittals, as they go through that, if it's meeting all the core requirements. And if it doesn't, they have to provide another round of comments in order to meet state laws.
Let me try. If they have a 30-day turnaround time and they make it in 30 days, they're all good and dandy. If they make it in 25 days, they're still good and dandy. There's no, they don't get any kind of financial extra compensation for being five days ahead, so we don't have that, no. What Sharon was discussing is that for some developers, they can pay an expedited fee, which is 1.5 times the fees they're going to pay to get that 25 or 20 days or 15 days or whatever they need to be turned around quickly. But there's no, there's no scalable incentive program, no.
So that's the carrot, is the 1.5% for expediting?
Except it has to be requested to get that, as opposed to just something that happens as part of the process. And, and this is not something that's normally done, what I'm talking about, or? I mean, I know in contracts, like, you know, I came Salt Lake for many years and they did the rail program there. And if the, the outside contractor for that did it ahead of time, well, then you get, you know, you get a little bit extra sweetness in the deal, you know, out of it. I, I don't know, but I just look at people, my phrase I give to everybody is everybody's coin operated. So how, how do you make it so that the community wins? And that if it costs a little bit extra, we, we know the benefit of that, of making customer service better for our community?
Councilmember Ramirez?
So just a couple of things. Rumor, can you address this? With the, with the outside consultant, what I am hearing is that, you know, they, they say, okay, these are the things that you need to do to get, you know, check, your checklist. So the developer or the business owner, check, 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 resubmit. But it was Sharon that originally said, these are the things that you still need to do. When it's sent back, now it's being reviewed by Jimmy. And Jimmy says, yep, you hit that, but you know what? It also should have included X, Y, and Z, so now you need to go back and do X, Y, and Z. And that the incentive, if you will, for the contract, for the contract agency is additional fees every time it's being submitted and then they're working on it and the billable hours and things like that. Is there truth to this kind of a back and forth that drags out the process? And rather than, you know, hey, I, I did what you said, let's move on?
Typically, I think everyone, you know, all the consultants, whether here or anywhere else, they try to always assign to the same plan reviewer because there is efficiency. You already know the project rather than assigning to anybody else. I think the rare instance where that's happened is if some, the original reviewer, for some reason, won't be available for an extended period of time, then you would do that just to, you know, assign to another person to move the project forward. And the fees are all based on the percentage of our plan review fees regardless of, you know, who they assign it to, so.
Okay, so this, this rumor is, there's, it's unfounded, if you.
Correct. Yeah, there is no incentive to generate more comments.
Okay. Then the other thing is, do you see, and perhaps maybe this is what you were speaking about with the permit navigator, but do you see opportunity where you can bring some of what is being outsourced back in-house to expedite processes?
Yes, I think that's going to probably become part of the budget discussion because to establish this in-house function, you know, you would be looking at resources and, you know, positions and something to kind of create that in-house and then supplement that with consultant services as needed to address the peak workload, yeah, or unusual projects.
And you would feel that there would be value to that in terms of customer service?
I think in the long term, there would be to bring value to enhance customer service and contribute to economic development.
Thank you.
Because you have somebody in-house, but that's, you know, that's really up to council.
Perfect. Thank you.
First of all, I think when we talked about the roundtables, this is a kind of hash-out that you, in real time at least, would, first of all, I think it would be cathartic for people like the gentleman that spoke earlier. But at the same time, it, it, it's not asynchronous, right? It's, it's happening right now and everybody whose party can say, well, no, that's not, and they didn't, and whatever. And that also helps you suss out a lot of the inefficiencies and the problems that you might not already see. So I think it's really good to hear about that. Other question I have is when you talk about bringing it in-house. Another question I have is when you talk about bringing it in-house, some of it, or whatever part you're, you're saying might come out in the budget process, is it your intuition that it would be done for the customer service reasons, or because it would either be revenue neutral or even more beneficial for the city financially to do so?
Yes, actually, I kind of did a five-year projection. If we were to move from 100% consultant-based model right now to this hybrid model, you know, that you have established a core in-house function supplemented by consultant, which is more typical probably for sites of city like ours. So the first year, you know, if you're able to bring staff onboard, they're just becoming familiar, right, with the city process. And the second year, they're still, you know, getting trained because the plan review function covers a really wide range of disciplines. So that's where you'll still have a combination of staff, you know, learning and becoming familiar with things along with the consultant. And then starting the third year, I would envision the in-house team to be able to retain more plan reviews, and that means retaining more plan check revenues also. And I think starting the fourth year, they should be able to retain, you know, a lot more in-house and just use the consultants as needed. And, you know, so between the fourth and fifth year, just based on, you know, kind of this model I did, the net revenue becomes pretty similar between fourth and fifth year and going forwards. But initially, it's an investment-
So initially, you're going to, it's going to cost you more, you're going to have to invest in it-
Correct.
And obviously, you also have to invest because there could be attrition and other things that are happening with employees. And so your eventual goal, you're neutral, is what you're saying?
Yeah, from between fourth and fifth year and beyond.
So you're really, that's neutral, including the, the deficit that you carried in the first couple or three years?
Going forward, yes. But, you know, there's a lot of assumptions also, right, that's, you know, when you can bring in staff that's qualified-
I understand.
And also the mix of projects.
What I'm saying is you're going to get to, to neutral for that year, okay? But you're not going to recover the initial two years or what have you of being in arrears in terms of recovery.
If you go further out years, I think you will.
So then it's better than neutral?
Because, yeah.
Okay.
Year four and five, I'm, this is just based on, you know, my projection, that you'll be able to retain more and more. But it's, there are a lot of factors involved.
Quick. I do think, and Sharon and I have talked about this as a work plan item, it's a, it's an analysis that needs to be very clear. The scenario she's describing is a perfect world scenario where nobody goes out on leave or, for whatever, and then you end up going on the outsource either way. So I, I know what you're asking, and I, I get that. But to say one is perfectly better than the other, it really depends. And especially when activity slows down, then you may be carrying costs-
I was doing that for the benefit of the people who think going inside is the best way to go with, with things and think that it would be, you know, and possibly, that's why I went through the exercises, just so it would come to, come to view that it's not always as rosy as it may seem, once you add in every little bit and piece that, that it costs.
But again, I think it depends on your goals.
Yeah.
You know, are you trying to save money? Are you trying to have things done faster? Both?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate the comment you made or the description about the size of the city we are and what makes it difficult on staffing, and that's why you have to outsource sometimes, where you have permanent staffing and outsourcing sort of at the same time, hybrid model. And in these comments, I've heard words, I've heard words like contractors and advocacy and things like that. So I would like to give a comment, like an analogy of my own business, right? So I, I was the same way for many, many years, kind of a mid-level sized company, right? And I got clients, just like the folks that come into our city hall are our clients, are our customers. And they asked me to do certain services. And oftentimes, we could do them all. And oftentimes, we couldn't do them all. And that's when we would do subcontracting, similar to what you're doing. I think maybe just one acknowledgement I would like to make is like, in our business in the private sector, when I outsource to another company, the burden is still on me, right? I'm the one receiving the money. The burden is on me to make sure that contractor does its job and does its job well. And we've used these terms here today about advocacy and things like that. I think that's what our citizens and our clients and our, and investors are looking for in Gilroy. And there's a term up there at the very end, second to the last line, I see that joy and privilege of getting people to the final. I think I said that in the last meeting. But I also said one more word, and that is, sometimes the burden needs to be on our staff to get people to the finish line. So just a comment.
And one thing I said last time too, is that, you know, perception's reality, right? And so you could have checked every box that there is, and you can be completely in the right, and you can have your list of, of reviewing everything that happened to this person or that person. But at the end of the day, if what you're hearing is this, that, and the other, that's the reality, right? And so it's not always easy to fix, but, but you have to use that as your guideline. It doesn't matter, in like Greg's analogy, if, if the contractor, he contracted them, they did exactly what they learned, and the customer still said, I'm not happy with this. You know, it, it's still, it's their perception.
But then again, there's value add too, right? In that if there's the customer service satisfaction to it, even though it may have cost a little bit at our end, you know, that whole reputation, that whole willingness to invest and things like that. So it's the value add. It's not necessarily the dollar, it's sometimes the value add. And I think that that also has to be a significant part of the conversation and being factored.
I 100% agree. That's why the first thing I said was, is this a finance thing or a customer service kind of thing? Because it's whatever your goal, you know, it could be a little bit finance, but mostly customer service, but you, as long as you understand what your goal is, then, then you can account for it. Maybe it's worth $285,000 increase in costs for the city to have better customer service and have it, you know, 30% of it in-house. But we just have to help them understand that.
Thank you.
Okay, so Sharon talked about permit navigator, in-house outsourced. Transparency is something somebody commented on. Red light, green light, yellow light for permitting processes. And I think that goes, again, to the, the permit navigator that we'll be looking at as an upgrade. We have a, if you recall, a few years ago, we went to the land management system that allowed people to do everything online, but it doesn't necessarily give them that dashboard that I keep hearing where you can kind of see, you know, where exactly your status is. And again, that's that transparency, not just in, in information, but just in understanding as well. So that, that is something that I believe we'll be, we'll be looking to do. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, why don't you just expand on that a little bit? We actually started looking at this several months after intergovernmental life, you know, and just due to our workload and permit activities, we haven't been able to really circle back to it, but we actually recently have. And it's looking at establishing this dashboard that's also integrated with GIS. So not only does it show real-time status, but also shows in a, you know, map format and it's kind of a storybook. So we're really looking forward to implement that, you know, in this next budget cycle.
And I, I will publicly say, I, the website portion that, that your department takes care of is super, super comprehensive. It's, it's not super easy to navigate yet, which you can work on, but it, it's, the information is there. And I will say that, you know, in paying attention to the community and in social media, many times people like, well, hey, what's happening over here? Why isn't this happening? Or why didn't that happen? And it is very easy for me to go out and find the page that specifically has the info on it and send it to them. So I think you just have that last mile to really hit, to make it so that it becomes a first place where people go and go to a map, which is great, and go, there it is on the map, what's going on? And then it gives them the info. So just congratulate you on it. It is a lot of information that you share out there, and it's super helpful. Now we just got to make it in a better way for, for customers to be able to self-service.
I think the self-service, but also a little bit of, like I said in the beginning, trying to, trying to anticipate that end-user customer, if they're over on the consultant side, you know, don't let the applicant reach back out to you and be like, hey, it's been 14 days, what's going on? You should know that based on this dashboard or however you create this system, right? You're like, ah, you know what, let me do a little, let me do a soft little, you know, ask back to the applicant. Or like, you know, I know it's been 12 days, like, everything good? Are you getting good feedback back and forth? I think that, just that simple little customer service thing of, of realizing they're still in line and they're a customer in your house, of just acknowledging that, I think can go a long way. And that's also something that could be told out, right, at the developer's roundtable or anywhere else, setting that narrative like, hey, I was, I was waiting in limbo. Also, I didn't, you know, I didn't necessarily get, get my task completed, but I, I got to hear back from, you know, whoever it is at the city, that here's the reasons why it's been taking a little bit longer than it should have.
Anything else to that area? We also have joy and privilege of getting people to, to final. I, I think that's a very valid point. A lot of what we do is transactional, and it's business transactions, but some of the greatest benefits is when we know we've helped someone and they know we've helped them. And so highlighting those things and remembering that is, is good. We also take care, you know, we do also try to build that culture through our customer service training that some of you will be going through as well. But at the end of the day, that is a people issue, and you get the right people involved. And we have a lot of the right people, we have a lot of good people in community development. But I think sometimes being overwhelmed and things like that takes away the joy of the transaction. I can certainly relate to that as well. Streamlining of commercial, I think we've mentioned that one several times, and unless anybody has anything to add on that one, I think we can keep going. This is our, oh, it turned off. This is our last actual slide for community development before we wrap up, which is actually somewhat repetitive because, as I told you, economic development and community development, they kind of cross over. It's not really one department in essence, and neither is community development. Developer roundtable, that will certainly be in our work plan to develop that as long, is also with this position that we've discussed, but it will be an organizational-wide effort because the roundtable only works if you have the right people, the right people at the table. Perspective to hear from the developers, and then again, multiple departments being involved to, to get everybody there to be able to answer questions. Roundtables only work if they have power and if they have the ability to leave that conversation and do something about that. And it's, again, having the right people. The last topic that we have for this afternoon is the housing element implementation progress. That was a subject that was brought up on our February 17th, so I'll put that back out to the council to discuss that. Have any thoughts or any strategic plan ideas for that? Come on, man, start us off. All right, Sharon wants to do a shameless plug for some of the activities. This is Housing on Steroids Month for Sharon and Community Development, so go ahead.
And Building Safety, yes.
And Building Safety too.
So yeah, you'll see the proclamations tonight, but out in the lobby, we have a table of, you know, flyers for all the events we're hosting for Building Safety Month and Affordable Housing Month. And a lot of the flyers are double-sided, with English on one side, Spanish on the other. And we have our first developer roundtable. When I say first, you know, it's the first one since I've been here, even though, you know, past experience with this, but for many members on our team too, because we have a fairly new department overall. We are doing the first developer roundtable on Tuesday, May 13, 12 to 1:30. And we'll be covering, this first was, you know, a combination of meet and greet, like I said, we have fairly, you know, new department, team members, and myself included. It's a meet and greet, plus we're going to touch on the topics, you know, that we're working on so the developer, development community is aware of it, such as the Affordable Housing Framework, you know, Comprehensive Zoning Code Update, Goals of the Housing Element, the upcoming code changes, you know, co-adoption for building codes, fire code, the whole set of, you know, building standards code. And of course, listen, huh? Listening to any feedback and, you know, just topics that any developers or any stakeholders want to discuss.
So for the developers that aren't here, not watching, not listening, not walking in our lobby, if someone asks me that they want to join this or get notified from it, how do they do that? Like on the future one, or this one coming up, like, how do they, how do they know? Is there a place on our, on your website that says, I'm a developer, I want to subscribe to your email list?
No, not yet, but we will get there, get there. Right now, we have one team member who's coordinating this, and so Christie is taking it on this time, and we have at the bottom the flyer to contact her. But yeah, in the future, we want to develop it into, you know, a website and all of that.
So besides handpicking, right? Because that's could be just her relationship with others, how, how is she able to reach those individuals that maybe she's not connected with? Or what kind of outreach are we going to do to try to get diverse people to the table?
Yeah, we actually developed a pretty, a long list of outreach lists, you know, not just for this, but for many other outreach we're doing. In fact, you'll see that tonight, you know, for CDBG. We looked at all the recent years of permit histories and all the applicant information, and that's how we created the large table. So she's, you know, serving as the contact person for this time, but we want to create, you know, a much more robust, a whole webpage and a whole, you know, contact process for people to stay, to stay informed.
I believe this is also on our e-newsletter as well, so it did go out to-
Yes, Friday's email express.
Thousands of email addresses. But just to be clear to you, this is housing development as well. It's not just, you know, if you want to build a commercial property, we're not there yet, we've talked about that, but this is part of our housing month, so. Any discussions about housing?
Is, when you said housing and you introduced housing element programs, is that the same as number three, 3:00 PM today, housing?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, so we can go and maybe some of the solutions for unhoused and things, that would be the time now?
We, we can, actually. We had scheduled that for the next session-
Okay.
But we're ahead of schedule. If we want to begin the conversation and we can review it at that, it'll make it more efficient, and we're here. So it's up to you.
He's saying that that's on the next topic.
Unhoused, yes.
Unhoused, yeah.
Housing and unhoused is coming up next.
No, just, we, we're doing housing right now.
We're doing housing right now.
Yeah. Unhoused is on our May 19th with your legislative agenda.
Okay.
But they cross over, so there's, I don't think there's a real rule that you have to wait till the 19th to even start.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So one of the, one of the things that I see us always getting behind is that when legislation gets enacted in September and signed into law, oftentimes, like ADUs is a perfect example, where we will adopt our own ordinance, not rely on whatever the state says. But we also have this hybrid, like crossing of, like, you know, we promise that January 1st, we will still process your ADU as, as in compliance of state law, and like, the website will show that there's a, like, we'll have the 2025 HCD manual for ADUs, right? And that's our processing. But our, our ordinance is always catching up. And, and I think that I've, what I've seen in other cities do that might be helpful here, rather than us trying to legislatively work out, you know, how do we update SB9? How do we update the ADU process? How do we update, you know, SB423 is another great example. But rather than doing all those cleanup language items in January, like, the first meeting in January, you just have cleanup of this, cleanup of this, cleanup of this, so that way it's just a little more clear. Because I have been contacted from, you know, from people, whether it's developers or, or citizens about the ADU laws, and they're just wondering like, well, if I contact community development, are they going to know it's the 2025 law? Or are they going to use what's in the code that was written a year ago? So, and, and that might make it easier on staff, that might make it more ministerial, but that's something that I'm wondering. And I've been waiting since February. It's like, is this going to be on the legislative agenda item? Because that's what happened last year. You know, we were going to put it on there, but you said, I'm already going to take care of it. But as we know, it's, it's May, and I don't know if we're, if we're doing everything in 2025 standards for, for that one specific item. So maybe you can address how you, whether this process works or it could be better.
And for some of these state laws, you know, I know staff has been implemented through processes or websites and, you know, handouts and things like that. And we've been trying to, you know, work on any ordinance updates and try to do as part of the Comprehensive Zoning Code Update. So that is still a catch-up, just because we've, you know, had to transition on different team members. And we might end up doing the ADU one, you know, separate from the rest of the process so we can do that faster, as an example. But I, I understand, you know, what you're saying, just doing it as a, you know, regular day.
Yeah, I mean, it could be Morgan Hill does it, they just come through in January and it's one agenda item where they just cross the board of anything that changed in zoning codes or whatever. It's like, here's the sentence that we have to change out, here's what we were doing in the past that we can't do anymore. Okay, moving on, next one is this. And it's just a, just one long legislative agenda item, but at least they start the year out, right? And you're not having one staffer interpret the law of like, no, that's not true, like, you know, the ADU law says this. And then, you know, when everybody, another staffer would know that, no, the state law changed at the end of last year. And then it usually ends up falling back on the city attorneys, you know, of like, oh my gosh, that's right, we got to bring the ADU ordinance back. And it's like October. And then there's another law that's already got signed in, and so you're constantly playing catch-up. I don't know. To me, it seems confusing, but I don't, I don't sit in your position.
Yeah, I think, you know, staff is committed doing all this and it's just, you know, being overwhelmed by permit activities and all this state laws that continue to come to us. You know, just our capacity is being limited. And so we are trying to build up our capacities, you know, in order to be more proactive that way. But yes, staff is aware of that and those are areas that we want to work on.
So it sounds to me like it might not be a priority, and I don't know whether it's a priority for us or not, but, you know, this could be, this could be something simply that we could take on in our own work plan and just simply ask the city attorney. Because there, it's not just changes in housing law, there's other laws that constantly get changed. And sometimes, I don't know if any of you do, but sometimes I just sort of sit back and wait, like, well, when will it change? And like the zoning ordinance is a perfect example where we implement our general plan in November of 2020, but we have not done our zoning code update. So we have this sort of hybrid approach of certain people doing what the 2040 plan says and then others, others don't, and then they need to get reminded. So I don't know whether that's something the city attorney could easily do, you know, on our side of just like, what needs to be legislatively cleaned up so that we're all, you know, on the same page and at the first of the year when we start?
Yeah, I think you raise a good point, Councilmember Hilton. And Sharon is correct that there has been sort of an overwhelming number of changes in recent years, particularly housing laws, but there have been some others as well. So I think we should work together and try to be more, not aggressive, but more kind of proactive on that. Because it is, it's very, I mean, it's been a very interesting process the last few years, frankly. And as you say, the ADU laws get changed every year now and various other housing laws do as well. So I think that's something we'll put on our work plan or to work on.
Thank you.
And to that, you know, as we go into budget and things like that, I mean, I would venture to guess that most of the unfunded mandates probably fall under your department. And so staffing and needs and things like that, you know, where are we with that? You know, as we look at creating the budget and creating opportunities, I mean, I get that, I mean, just from being on the planning commission to your point, I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous how quickly these things come in and things like that. And it falls on your staff for certainly all of the housing legislative updates. So how do you balance that out? And are you balanced out or are you looking at that, you know, ahead of, you know, like, where's the gap? Is the gap being filled, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I'll take that since it, you're right, a lot of that does fall to community development. It's also in public works and it's also in HR and other departments. And the gap gets filled by prioritization. And if, you know, we, a few months ago, we did trash capture devices and there was a question from councils, what if we don't do it? What are they going to do to us? And we didn't really want to answer that question, but we did not move forward with what we felt was what we needed to do because of a mandate. That's a risk decision from the council and from myself. And so do you, when you prioritize your budget and you prioritize where you have money to put it, where are you going to put it? Are you going to put it on an unfunded state mandate because you have to? Or are you going to say that's not a priority for us even though it's mandated by the state? We have other priorities and that's the, that's the difficult choice that councils have to make. We're going to always side with a staff with the state mandates.
Right, but some of those, we can just kind of, there's a risk, you know, the sewers, one of them. Housing element is a different thing. There are significant consequences that come into play if we do not meet deadlines and things like that, right? So, you know, prioritization to me would be, you know, where are the consequences, the costly or impactful consequences? And are we in a gap situation in terms of meeting those types of requirements and mandates? Does that make sense?
It does. I think it's, I think there's a lot more analysis and information we can give you and maybe an overview of unfunded state mandates that we're working on and others, and some of those, where we're at in that process. Are we keeping up? And others, we're not.
And what are the consequences? You know, how much is this, if we get, if we get, you know, fined $1,000 a day because we haven't submitted or, you know, or if there's a builder's remedy that can fall into place or, you know, we don't know of any consequence that, you know, other than the fact that this is supposed to happen, right? That helps to create those priorities and then determine where we need to fill the gaps, I guess.
To add on to that, and I think it's a great way that you put it, the risk factor, and it would be super helpful. That's why when the trash collecting in the runoff, storm drains that came up before us, that's why those were some of the questions that I actually did ask, which is, when do we have to have this by? What happens if we don't do it? What's the possible risk? So I, you know, I would encourage to help us out with that and to help out how we understand where the budget's going to be if there is a more index-y way of letting us know, right? Like there's, you know, red, yellow, green, you know, kind of a, you know, one through 10, like, hey, be careful on this one. And then also potential, you know, very high level, potential implications, don't know, you know? You guys can go carefully with this, kind of a thing. It'd be super helpful because you can't necessarily do everything all at once that even might be mandated of you. It's just, it's not even feasible. So how do you make a decision? So getting more information to us to help making that call and take those risks is super helpful.
Yeah, I think so, because I will tell you, as an administrator, most of us, we don't want to get in the business of telling you, oh, it's not that big of a deal. You could say that, but we don't want to do that. But if we give you the information, you can make a policy decision.
So one of the good stories that I'll tell for you all that we did last time around, the last year budget cycle, is that we realized that the residential streamlining process after entitlement to permit, that that was actually going to get mandated now, right? Depending on how many units, it was 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, depending on how many units you're building. And we knew that was coming and we planned for it and we talked about it during the strategic planning session and we budgeted for it and we ended up hiring another permit tech. So we do know, we, these two up here do know that, you know, you see something happening and we react to it and we add another permit tech. But that is also just another double down of, we do this well on the residential side. The same people that are processing permits on the commercial side should be picking up on this, you know? And if we have a process that really works well and we funded it, well, let's use it on the commercial side, too, and let's benefit off some economic development, you know, on that side also, you know, when it comes to permit processing and stuff. So there's a good example of how you all did it.
Well, thank you. I don't, I don't, at this point, I am fine with waiting until the May 19th date as since we do have a long meeting tonight as well. And so.
I do have one question.
But we have to do some closing comments and questions, for sure.
Point in, the point in time count, does that come out yet, Sharon, before that meeting that we're going to have? Or will it come out?
Based on past years, county would typically issue that in July. So it's conducted in January and yeah, in all the past years, I would.
Not very helpful to us, then. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So I appreciated, you know, and I don't know if you threw me under the bus, I can't remember when I was the one that suggested we meet earlier today to do this strategic planning rather than during the council meeting. That's, it was my idea. But I, but I think it was very helpful because we were able to spend more time. So my question is, with what is left for us on the strategic planning, would it, can we do it in the May 19th meeting? Or do we need to schedule something more like this?
I think we can do it on the May 19th meeting. And I will, I'm going to defend myself. I said, Councilmember Ramirez had a good idea. I said that, it's documented, I said it was a good idea.
I thought it was a good idea.
And I think it was a great idea. We needed this time to kind of go deliberately and not feel rushed, and that was how we were feeling at the night. But I do believe all you have left now is unhoused, I would say only, that and your legislative agenda. And you will generate the legislative agenda. I won't do that, no. You'll come up with things that you want the council to consider throughout the year as part of your policymaking.
And then what is the end result of this process? Right? Do we have?
You have been two slides ahead of me all day, and that's good. So I'll skip ahead. So next, we will take this information and we will start developing our work plans. And then when we do the budget workshop with you and we do your budget adoptions, you will see the actual work and identification of goals that we are looking to do. I will also kind of put together your five priorities for you, but you will, you will tell me if those are right or wrong. So right now, you know, we have the five priorities that are listed in the current budget and we talked about earlier. I will kind of morph those into something that I think is reflective of what you've given me. And then we'll spend some time during the workshop and during the budget adoption process, making sure that we're all aligned. So you have that. You also have the public work, community workshop. You have your budget workshop and then you have adoption. And the adoption will include the work plans, priorities, goals, all those things. And then the final part of that is the actual adoption of the budget. So when you do consider adopting a budget on June 2nd, I believe that's four or five different documents that you're approving at that time.
Any other questions before we go to final public comment? Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor, Council, we have one speaker, James here.
All right. Can you get the mic, please? Sorry. We can hear you. The computer doesn't hear you.
Hello. So this is live action. This came out of my inbox this morning and I spoke with Sharon about it and I'm sure they're going to resolve it. But I think it's a perfect illustration of what's wrong with our process right now. So as part of our greenfield project, we have to do what's called a Habitat Conservation Program Permit. They have an applicant portal. I go on the portal, I fill in the APN number, the, you know, the area we're going to develop, I calculate a fee worksheet, and then send that to the city. This is a certification letter that Craig Tamborini generated for me. So I also have to do that for each lot. So now I'm in for lot two on my permitting and the planning department sent me an email saying that they've retained an outside consultant to facilitate my Habitat Conservation Program application. And they're going to act as an interface between me and HCP. And I'm going to provide the information to them. They're going to do a completeness check, which means multiple incomplete letters. Then they are going to go to that online portal and enter the information that it took me less than an hour to enter. Would you like to guess how much that costs? $4,000. So it adds time, money and energy to the process that's very simple, that we've already completed prior. So this is David J. Powers. I think we should take him off our consultant list. That's price gouging. How can they possibly justify that? And yet it's just one more thing that I have to fight off. I'm constantly having to play defense and it just makes it that much harder. I also want to, on a positive note, our Hecker Pass, our Harvest Park Intersection is finally being completed. So we attended a very positive pre-construction meeting with George Durand, Meritage, my builder partner on that, was also impressed with it. I thanked George for it and they're giving us full cooperation. We're out there every day getting it done. And it should be done in about, it's been on the ground seven years, it should be done in about three weeks or so, give or take. We do have a slight budget overage on that, less than $300,000 on a three-milliliter intersection. We were trying to resolve that with HEBA before she left. It was the standard, we're not going to pay it, sue us, you know, that kind of thing. But these are directs, these are project directs. So HCP, UPRR, too many acronyms, UPRR, their costs went up, some of our direct costs went up. Not our contingency fees, not, it's not our time or energy. These are direct invoices, project directs. So if the city was in the lead on that, they would, without doubt, they would pay themselves that money out of the TIF. Same goes for their consultants, but somehow when it's the applicant, they don't want to pay it. And that's what led to that intersection being on the ground for seven years in the first place. So it's good news that we're moving forward. We're probably going to have to get an agenda item to either amend the PIA or somehow account for that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No, the speakers at this time.
Okay, I think you already did number 10, correct? So we can just go right into council closing remarks. Just make sure everybody's awake. I'm going to go to Councilmember Klein first.
Well, like I said, good idea, having it today. It gives us that ability to just put it out there and I think we've done that and it's encouraging. Look forward to July 1 and what happens then. And again, I'm encouraged by the group that we have here and staff and what we're able to do and moving the ball forward, so that's my thoughts.
Councilmember Ramirez.
So I'm really encouraged by today. You know, I know I've been in the shoes in past strategic planning sessions that Councilmember Marks and Bracco have, but I hope that they are also encouraged. I hope that the community is encouraged. I do believe that this council will be, I think Mr. Forbes and his team understand that we're kind of like on it and we will move forward with a lot of this and I think that there will be a lot of positive outcomes that come from this. The only other thing that I think that we didn't talk about, I don't know where it falls under, but it needs to be talked about because of the number of emails that we've all gotten, we need those pickleball courts.
I'm encouraged also, and for those members of the public that are watching this or watch it later, and you see us sort of this back and forth and some of the comments we were making back to staff and, you know, some of them, it might sound harsh on the outside, but this group has been doing very well on meeting individually, you know, with staff, meeting together with staff in small groups. And I think that that really shows. And we do, you know, I do appreciate the relationship that we do have with the executive staff. And I'll just close it off by saying pickleball and see you all tonight.
Councilmember Marks.
Well, this is encouraging with this council that I think we're going to hold everyone accountable because I did not see that in the past. And we have come up with a lot of really good ideas that I want to see implemented sooner rather than later. And at the last meeting in December of 2025, I will tell you if this day was successful or not. Because I want to see a lot of this already started. That's it.
Councilmember Fugazi.
I can't compare it to any previous one, other than the one that I attended as part of the public. I still will say this is probably the best council in a long, long time, okay? But I think we're making some serious progress. I think, I think staff in general in a good way to layer on to what Councilmember Hilton said, is understanding the urgency, the impatience, the desire to make things happen and to be watching it very closely as it does and be there to help in any way we possibly can. And that's good for the city. And I would encourage everybody to use the Gilroy Connect app. If you have anything around the city that you see is not quite the way it should be, download the app, take a picture and send it in. The staff is being very responsive to a system that's really new and I've seen this implemented in business, a lot of places, and they're doing a lot better than I've seen a lot of businesses do in terms of going after it. And there will be training wheels on it a little bit, but stay involved and yeah, we're going to see you in a few hours.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yeah, I just want to thank the community and our staff for sticking it out through this. I've seen some look like they're falling asleep, but I think we all made it. Yeah, and I think it went really well today and I think our process is working and the proof is in the pudding. We'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. As the person who always gets to go last, I'm stuck because everybody says what I already wanted to say. I'm going to try to find one item that nobody said now, but we talked about it a lot today, and it's relationships. I believe that a lot of what we can accomplish in this community can be done by strengthening relationships in what we do with members of this community. And second, I know somebody said this earlier, I believe. And second, I know somebody said this early, I believe city administrator Forbes said economic development is connected to everything and I want to remind everybody about how important that statement is. It's, as an, imagine if you're an investor and you're coming to town, it's not just the community development department, it's your police department, it's your fire department, it's your roads, it's everything. So I'm looking forward to continuing that conversation as well. And thank you everybody for today. See you in a few hours.